The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions by public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And then star six, unmute yourself, send your questions to staff via email at CCFBoston.gov. Or via Twitter by tagging the Twitter handle at Boston and Byron using the hashtag concom hearing. For the record, I'm Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission and for staff that's present, could you please identify yourself?
Eleanor Ademary with the Environment Department.
Thank you.
Christopher Edwards with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you, Christopher. Now, call the role of Commissioners present Commissioner Sullivan.
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Long.
Nick Wong.
Commissioner Khan.
Conan Turvenganam.
Commissioner Richmond.
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst.
Anne Herbst.
Okay, great, thank you. Just want to right off the top here and beg for the indulgence of the applicants. I'd like to move the agenda around a little bit. I want to call the Curly Center up first. And the reason for that is we skipped a hearing last, I guess it was July, right after July 4th because of lack of forum. So we felt like this was the perfect opportunity to try to streamline our process a little bit. By voting on the orders of conditions, if the applicants are fine with our proposed orders of conditions at the hearing that we close the hearing. So as opposed to waiting two weeks for us to vote on the order of conditions, we're going to try out voting on the orders the same evening, which many or maybe most Conservation Commissioners do as a practice. So with that being said, I'd like to just move the Curly Center up because I know it's got a lot of public interest. And we'll get that out of the way. So that would be notice of intent for DEP file number 0061950 and Boston file number 2023-040 from CDM Smith, Inc. on behalf of the City of Boston Centers for Youth and Families and the Boston Parks and Recreation Department for the Proposed Beach Operations and Maintenance Plan for the Curly Community Center located at 1663 Columbia Road, South Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage, coastal bank, 25-foot waterfront area, 100-foot buffer to coastal beach and 100-foot buffer to coastal bank. I know that we have the Commissioner of BCYF here this evening, and I don't know if you'd like to make any comments, but I'll extend that courtesy to Commissioner Rivera, if you'd like.
Thank you, Chairman Parker, and good evening, Commissioners. First and foremost, thank you so much for moving us around and allowing us to present first. I am Mike Rivera. I'm the Commissioner of Boston Centers for Youth and Families. I'll make brief comments after the presentation from our consultant, but just wanted to introduce myself as well as Eddie Edward McGuire, who's on the call. He's a Director of Operations for BCYF. And we are also joined by Robert Bob Button from CDS Smith. And I'm gonna again turn it over to Bob for the presentation and I'll come back for a brief comments at the end.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And thank you for all the work you do for the city. I know everybody in every neighborhood recognizes contributions that 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 BCYF gives to each community. I don't see any local elected officials, so I think we can go right to the presentation. So who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Evening. Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. This is Robert Button, Vice President with CDM Smith, offices at 75 State Street in Boston. Good evening to the Commission members and staff. Thank you for having us tonight and for placing us on the agenda so quickly. I'm here to present the Beach Operation and Maintenance Plan for the BCYF Center for Youth and Families Curly Community Center site at 1663 Columbia Road in South Boston. This, as you recall, was before you in 2020 for a major renovation project. That was DEP file number 0061745 and Boston number 2020-028. Conditions 75 of that order required the city through the Centers for Youth and Families to develop the Beach Operation and Maintenance Plan, which we presented to you and was subject to tonight's hearing. Next slide, if you could, Eleanor. This is an image of the site showing the building itself in the darker gray color. The three entrances at K, L, and M Streets, as well as the concrete deck and the beach areas at the site, the orange lines heading into the water are the fences and the grinds that were constructed many, many years ago as part of the beach work. Next slide, if you could. This is a Google Earth image of the site as it was undergoing renovations. And you can see the erosion controls and other measures that were implemented in accordance with the requirements of that prior order, as I said before. Next slide, if you could. The resource areas identified on the site were presented in the notice of intent. This shows you the coastal bank buffer waterfront area, coastal bank limits, velocity loan limits, estimated habitat of rare and wild species. As you're aware, the piping plover has existed at the site for many years. And that was the subject of this Beach Operation and Maintenance Plan, Chapter 91 jurisdictions, high tide lines, and on and on. So next slide, please. Trying to go through this very, very quickly to help move along. The Beach Operation and Maintenance Plan was submitted to Natural Heritage on June 30th, along with the notice of intent information. We worked very closely, and I'd like to thank Mass Audubon and the Coastal Waterbird Program and the Natural Heritage and Endangered Species folks for working with us to develop this plan. They have reviewed the document and they issued the attached approvals. And if you can see on the screen, and I'm sure you have in your packages, their approval indicated that with the appropriate supplemental conditions, that this would not result in an adverse effect or taking of the endangered species. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that any of the Commissioners have or the public, if we can help. I'd like to turn it back to the Commissioner as well. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Commissioner Rivera.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks, Chairman Parker. So I just wanted to, again, thank you for having us this evening. If you're not familiar with BCYF, the Boston Centers for Youth and Families, we operate 35 community centers, sorry, 35 facilities across the city, which includes community centers as well as pools. The Curly is one of several community centers in South Boston. You know, the community has long awaited the opening of the site in the short time that we've opened the building. We have already, within the first two weeks, we had 6,000 people visit the building. So we are anxious to be fully operational. And as Bob said, we are grateful to the many partners that have made it possible for us to keep a safe environment for the piping plovers, including Mass Audubon. And we are happy that they've made flight. And wanted to ask your consideration in making a decision on this application this evening. And with that, I will turn it back to Chairman Parker. Thank you for hearing us.
Great, thank you so much. And Bob, thanks for the presentation. Okay, Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
I don't have anything in particular on this. We have one public comment in our file, which is in the folder for the Commissioners' review. And I also will note that the conditions for this project have been reviewed by the applicant and everything.
Fantastic, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Chair, I apologize for not flagging this, but I think I have to recuse myself.
Oh.
Park's on the applicant list.
Yep, you do. Okay, so let the record reflect that Commissioner Long has recused himself. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Khan?
Sir Parker, I'm not sure now how relevant this is, but in general, we helpful to see the 50-year rendering of sites, especially one as close to the water as this one is. Given that we're meant to look ahead for 50 years. Is there a rendering that you have that you can share? Looking ahead and after the sea level rise, what the site's going to look like in 50 years?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I can partially respond.
Please do.
So as as part of the 2020 Notice of Intent process that we went through, Commissioner, we did present all of that information for the structure itself, wave height elevations, and all the relevant sea level rise and climate change information that was required as part of that filing. So that information does exist. I can certainly provide staff with the copies of that information for you to take a look at and have for your record. But it was previously presented. This notice of intent is predominantly focused on the Beach Operation and Maintenance Plan.
I understand. Thank you, Bob.
Sure thing.
That's all, Chair Parker.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions, and I just want to say that it is absolutely a beautiful, beautiful presentation. And I am sure everybody is going to join me in wishing this to happen quickly and as beautifully as you presented it.
Thank you, Commissioner Herbst.
Just a comment that I have worked with Mass Audubon on beach management plans for clover management, and they're a great group to work with, and I think this is terrific. I will note that it is sometimes difficult with the public with restrictions. And my experience was in Mass Audubon's experience with this, that we were able to organize community members to help be supportive and answer questions and that that might be something you'd want to take a look at for another season. But thanks.
Great, thank you. Eleanor, anybody from the public raise their hand?
I am not seeing any raised hands, and I'm also not seeing any emails in our inbox.
Okay, and you've indicated that the applicant is fine with the, fine with the order of conditions?
Yes, I have, and I apologize. We have Michael Guerin in the chat.
I just saw that.
Trying to share, yeah.
Okay.
Michael, would you like to, would you like to share a public comment?
Michael, do you know how to unmute yourself? Or Eleanor, can you unmute him?
Yes, I'll go ahead and unmute. There we go. You should be unmuted now.
Hello there, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Michael Guerin. And I've been, I grew up in South Boston, and I've been going to the Curly since I was very, very young. And I started playing handball there when I was seven. And we have a great group of people that play handball. And ever since the Curly reopened on June 15, I have been doing a lot of outreach and recruitment to bring new people into the, into the game. And, you know, a good portion of the 6,000 people that have kind of registered. And, you know, I just want to say, like, we're anxious to get back out onto the handball courts because this is the prime playing season. And I really appreciate everybody's efforts in, you know, getting, getting the access to the beach again, because right now as it stands, it's hazardous to play on the courts because of the the temporary fence that's been put up. It borders where we play, and it's creating a hazardous situation. And, you know, to anything, to any extent that we can, you know, we can get access to the beach, greatly appreciated by the handball community, which is, again, which is growing and trying to grow it even more. And, and so that's, it's a great game. It's a great workout. Inarguably, the best activities in the world. And that's why I'm trying to grow the game and bring more people into it. And I was sure that all of you would agree that we, you know, we, that's a very good thing to get more people involved. Startup costs to start playing are very, very low. It's the polar opposite of hockey, hockey equipment, startup costs for handball dollars or less for equipment. And it's a great game for all the people, you know, and the whole, you know, all different demographics. And so that's, you know, that's my, that's my two cents. And again, thank you for all your efforts.
Great. Okay, fantastic. And Commissioner Sullivan just texted me. He'd be interested in a one-on-one with you, Michael. So definitely follow up with him after.
Okay, that would be great. And can I hear from Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, well, if you really understand Chair Parker, you'd understand that comment, so.
We'll get him there. Don't worry, Michael. Okay, thank you so much for your comment. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing with approving the proposed order of conditions and issuing them this evening.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
We're just not voting.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries five to nothing. Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
Take care. You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is notice of intent for DEP file number 0061928 and Boston file number 2023-018 from Horsey Witten Group, Inc. on behalf of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed remodeling of the former Doyle Playground on River Street in Hyde Park, Boston. The resource areas are bordering lands subject to flooding, riverfront area and waterfront area. This has been continued from the May 3rd, 2023 hearing. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brian Kuchar, Principal Landscape Architect from the Horsey Witten Group and Registered Civil Engineer. With me tonight, I also have Ruth Hellfeld and Cass Cross from the Department of Conservation and Recreation, as well as Kate Kennon from Offshoots, who is serving as the Lead Landscape Architect and Designer for this project.
Great. And where we picked up, I mean, I think you sent a supplement on July 17th, yeah, just very recently. So let's go over that, because I think that's what we have left here.
Yeah, and just to refresh everyone's memory on this project, we're developing the former Doyle Playground into a new neighborhood park in the Hyde Park Neighborhood in Boston. It includes flexible open space, performance space, accessible footpaths, and a river overlook. We did present it two prior hearings, one on, I believe, April 19th, and then a second hearing on May 3rd. We did submit a response to our initial comments from that April 19th hearing. At the following, at the follow-up hearing on May 3rd, we had further discussion on those responses. And in particular, there were a few issues raised and concerns in regards to stormwater management, stormwater infiltration, some erosion control, and also invasive species management. So we've been working with the design team and DCR to come up with a strategy and to improve the project to address those concerns. So what we'd like to do tonight is just briefly summarize the changes to the design that we think provide, address the comments, number one, and provide a more robust stormwater management approach. The first item that I'd like to talk about is the infiltration stormwater management. There was some concerns that, or there was a request from Commissioners that we tried to do a little bit more on the stormwater side, in particular infiltration. After the discussions, as I mentioned, with our client and the design team, we decided to switch the asphalt footpaths to a porous asphalt material to significantly increase the infiltration capacity of the site. We also believe that helps to minimize some of the erosion concerns as stormwater from smaller storm events will be infiltrated directly on the surface versus running off the site and leading to potential long-term erosion concerns. We've also, in our summary letter, as requested, we provided the amount of infiltration or the volume of stormwater runoff being infiltrated. And we are now exceeding the one-inch volume, and it's just short or just shy of two inches of runoff, around 1.86 inches. So we feel that's a significant increase. We also looked at some of the erosion concerns that were raised, in particular at the level spreader for the small landscape depression that was hand, that was collecting stormwater runoff from the water quality swale. What we've done is we've provided an additional level spreader after, for larger storm events as it overtops the pathway and flows off the site. We believe that is addressed the long-term erosion. In particular, we've included the velocities for the five-year, 10-year, 25- and 100-year storm event. And we believe we now have protection all the way up to the 100-year storm event. I also just want to point out that because we've switched to the porous asphalt, we've reduced the the overall volume and the stormwater flow from the site, and that's reflected in the updated stormwater management report in the tables that were included in our response letter. We've also addressed or updated the O and M plan to include the necessary steps to maintain both the permeable pavers that were always in the original design and the porous asphalt. I think that covers the significant changes on the stormwater side and the site design. As I mentioned, it's really just a switching of the material and beefing up or providing a more robust stormwater design. And I think at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Kate Kennon from Offshoots to just really briefly go through the invasive species management plan that was submitted.
Thanks, Brian. Kate Kennon from Offshoots, Registered Landscape Architect. So we had just updated the invasive management plan. Commissioner Long had suggested last time that basal bark treatment might be a good idea to add to the, to the Tree of Heaven management strategy. So what we actually did is just updated the vegetation management plan to be a little bit more robust and include the same strategies that were previously approved by the Conservation Commission for the Charles River Vegetation Management Plan that lists a more, it's a more robust list of all the species that they could potentially encounter, rather than just the ones we predominantly saw on site, and it has the basal bark treatment and some other strategies in there as well, just to, just to really go after the invasive. So that's what was done there.
Thanks, Kate. And the last item, I believe Cass is going to go over, or just briefly touch on the order of conditions, and there's some negotiations going on between DCR and the Commission as it relates to those final orders of conditions. And I also should have mentioned, we do have a plan. Or if we want, we could, Eleanor could share the plan set if there are specific questions. Or if you'd like me to point out the specific changes on one of the plans, I would probably recommend you would use the grading pen, this would be sheet seven.
Okay. Okay, sounds, um. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Are you finished?
I was just going to say that I did receive Eleanor's revised draft order of conditions, the reviewing of those, and then I'll be in touch with her and we'll work those through and we'll get back in touch on those.
Oh, okay. Great. Thanks, Cass. Okay. You're welcome. Eleanor, do you have anything on this?
I don't have anything to add on this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
No, I appreciate the relook to stormwater, and I knew you guys would do that good. Now I just hope that they can keep up with the maintenance plan that they propose to keep it going as good as it's designed to go. So that's all I got to say. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Yeah, I also appreciate some of the detailed changes to the vegetation management. Makes sense to me to kind of coalesce them with the approved Charles River Management Plan. So, yeah, appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Khan?
I was glad to hear that the infiltration improvement also improves the erosion condition, meaning reduces erosion. So that's a good observation that when you try to do one good thing, then leads to another good thing. So I'm really glad to hear that this process led to this iteration and an improved condition here, improved plan here. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I don't see any raised hands, and we haven't gotten any additional comments or emails.
Okay, great. So with that, doesn't sound like we're ready on the conditions yet. So I know you'll be in touch with Cass and hopefully be able to vote on those in two weeks. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Great. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That passes six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, notice of intent for DEP file number 0061948, Boston file number 2023-037 from GEI Consultants, Inc. on behalf of Massport or Massachusetts Port Authority for the proposed installation of geotextile to prevent fill loss and sinkholes along an existing bulkhead on the shoreline of Boston Harbor located at 20 Fid Kennedy Drive, South Boston. Resource areas are land subject to coastal storm flowage designated port area, 100-foot buffer to buffer zone to coastal bank. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening. Madeline Sewell, Environmental Manager for Massport. I am also joined by Chet Myers, Assistant Director for Maritime at Capital Programs and Environmental Affairs for Massport, and Russell Titmus from GEI Consultants. And I'm going to pass it over to Russell to tell you a little bit more about the project.
Great. Thank you, Madeline.
Thank you.
Hi there. Russell Titmus from GEI Consultants. You want me to do the talking chat or?
Sure, go ahead, Russell.
All right, so Russell Titmus from GEI Consultants, thank you for having us on tonight. We can just hop to the next slide. So the site is located right on Boston Harbor, North Jetty, just to the north of the cruise ship terminal. And alongside the, we're part of the Massport Marine Terminal. It's, it's an exposed site, and Massport uses it right now, rents the space out to various tenants. So if we can move on to the next slide, slide, please. Typical site conditions out there at the moment. You can see pavement across the site, and the photos on the right and the lower photo show some of the sinkholes and things that are developing behind the existing bulkhead there. The bulkhead is land with a pile-supported wharf structure, and the soil is actually disappearing down through the holes in the bulkhead now. So this, this project is intended just to provide a fix to those sinkholes. We can move to the next slide. So this is the site plan. Boston Harbor and the water is at the top of the plan there. The red and the blue are the repair areas on the site. And the sort of area that looks a bit like it's hatched is the North Jetty pile-supported structure. You can see the bulkhead alignment has been marked on there with the arrow. And the proposed repair is basically excavating behind the bulkhead, installing geotextile, and then backfilling again. And there's an area of the site which has the hatching on, which is going to get repaved just to repair the pavement and restore it to a safe condition. So we have two repairs, the red area and the blue area on this plan. And if we just move to the next slide, it shows the first repair. So on the left-hand side is the land, right-hand side is the water. The bulkhead, something's happened with my slides. Some of my callouts have moved. Where it says existing bulkhead, and there's a white sort of box almost over the top of those two lines, that actually is the existing bulkhead as opposed to the, the batter pile that it's pointing at. So there's a steel sheet pile bulkhead in there, which has developed some corrosion holes down at low tide. And the plan is to excavate behind and install the geotextile around the limits of the excavation. Install some stone-wrapped geotextile as well, just to force the drainage to go through that area now. But it'll all be enclosed with geotextile and then backfill over the top, and where it is paved, we will repave. There's a few vehicle crossing points, and we want to repair those at the same time. So there's a concrete patch as well to go in on the edge of the concrete wharf structure. If we move to the next slide, this is the second repair. So in this area, the wharf structure is actually uh in this area, the wharf structure's actually been demolished already, but the bulkhead still remains. Um so there's an area there which is just a sloping bank behind the bulkhead. And there's some uh some concrete barriers, they're actually Jersey barrier type things that are the the pa- barriers that were brought in for the Grand Prix, uh they've been stacked behind. And we want to put geotextile down there, restack those barriers and just place some stone over that bank again to prevent erosion. Um that area is actually used, there's some mooring bollards further to the left on this uh location, so it's important to maintain safety through that area. Uh and I think that is it for a brief presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. Um. I think you should anticipate, well, first of all, could you talk about how you will uh prevent debris from falling into the water during construction?
Yeah, we because we're working landward of the uh the bulkhead there, there's no holes there that actually will uh allow debris through. So uh there's there's no demolition work or anything that's gonna cause debris going through there. The you've got the concrete deck all the way through with the pile-supported area.
Okay, and you um might anticipate, and I'll let others ask these questions, uh some questions about improvement of the um stormwater system in that area that uh given that you're doing work, we we typically like to look for that, those types of improvements. But um Eleanor, do you have something?
You just covered what I was going to ask, so um no.
Okay, um Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, what are you doing about stormwater improvements at the site?
So Commissioner Sullivan, if I if I can uh respond to that. Um we we are not currently uh planning on uh improvements directly associated with this project. We're just trying to maintain the existing surface out there. However, uh Massport is currently entertaining uh doing a full redevelopment of the site. Uh which we would expect to occur uh within a year or so, uh to begin within a year or so, at which point um we would be uh having a developer engaged uh to upgrade the site. And at that point, uh we would expect probably to return to the commission with with more uh significant uh improvements on the site, which would include uh improvements such as uh stormwater improvements and such.
How does it drain now? Is it sheet flow or is it you have structures out there to capture?
Uh there are, uh I I think it depends on the location. Um right now, I believe that uh the deck itself probably uh drains by sheet flow. The the deck was constructed, I believe, in the nineteen forties. Um and um much of the facility uh was developed historically. I know that there are catch basins on site. Um uh particularly on the western portion of the site, um and I believe there are some on the eastern portion of the site as well. Um they run uh east-west along uh Fid Kennedy Boulevard and then uh near Swordfish Way, they turn abruptly uh to the northeast and I'm sorry, John, I'm uh sorry, Commissioner Sullivan? Okay, uh so originally there were uh there were three jetties, there was a West Jettie, a North Jettie and an East Jettie. Uh the East Jettie and the North Jettie are still in place. Uh the West Jettie uh was demolished, uh I believe in the nineteen eighties. And uh there was a discharge point um through the West Jettie uh that um was reverted to new stormwater line that runs uh parallel to where the West Jettie used to be and discharges immediately to the west of the North Jettie.
Yeah, so as a minimum, I think uh you you could show us that you've got at least those structures working, they've been clean. Um but you know, functional until the year or two comes up when you're trying to have a full development. Just to keep things in better shape than they might be today, which it shouldn't be heavy lifting cleaning out basins if in fact they need it. Existing bases.
Would it would it be helpful if we uh if we uh updated a plan and submitted it with our pre-construction documents that showed the locations of all the structures and uh outlined uh the cleaning procedures that were going to take place prior to construction start?
Yeah, that that would be excellent. In fact, if you're gonna be moving a lot of dirt, you might want to clean them after you get through moving all the dirt, make them not that you make a mess, but just suggest it. I had, sorry, these bulk, these bulkheads have holes in them. Um what is the overall condition of the bulkhead or is that gonna have to be addressed when a new development comes in with a full bulkhead, you know?
So we expect the new development to completely rebuild uh the North Jettie or at least the majority of the North Jettie, and that is going to include the bulkhead and the pile-supported structure. Uh it's very close to the end of its useful life. The project that we are proposing is intended to extend its useful life, but not for that much longer, probably another year or so. Um that's the intent at this point. Uh so we would fully expect that if there is redevelopment, it would it would be a full redevelopment of the site.
Okay, thank, thank you. That's all I had.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Long?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Khan?
Just trying to understand the nature of or maybe the urgency of this problem. The is the sinkhole a safety issue because of vehicular transportation in the area?
That's correct. Uh the sinkholes have been developing over time. Uh but what happens is uh there's paving uh in the parking lot immediately behind uh what is essentially a pile-supported concrete deck. And uh the intersection between where the asphalt parking lot and the concrete deck uh come together. Uh because of these holes in the bulkhead has been gradually developing sinkholes over time. And as a result, uh it's unsafe for vehicles to be able to transfer from one place to another. I you may have seen on on um I believe, I believe there's a photograph that showed uh one of the steel plates that we use. Uh that's that's what we have to use right now in order to safely move uh back and forth is is to go over those steel plates because of the sinkholes that have developed and 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 they've been getting worse over time. And that's what we want to do. We want to just make it safe for vehicles to be able to move back and forth so that we can uh reasonably use the pier for its remaining life. Uh before before it is redeveloped.
Okay, and when you said earlier behind the bulkhead, did you mean like the land side of the bulkhead?
That's correct, yes. Yeah, sort of immediately behind the bulkhead. Um so if you if you imagine there would be, there would be earth and then there would be the bulkhead and then there would be um you know, the concrete. And if there was a hole in the bulkhead, then sort of immediately behind that steel sheet, there would a void would develop. Uh but because it's paved, a lot of times you don't know where that where that void is because it um so that's that's one of the reasons why we want to remove the the asphalt, so that we can expose where those voids are. Uh and then properly fill them and then put something in front of the uh the hole that created the void in the first place to to keep it from to keep it from recurring. So that's that's the objective.
That makes sense. What what would be the material used for backfilling and uh compacting?
That is a good question. Russell, would you like to answer that question?
It it would be primarily the excavated material. So uh where the holes are, we'll put something a little coarser in because once a bulkhead develops holes, um and you put the geotextile in, you want to make sure that the flow, it basically turns into a a weak drain that you didn't plan originally when the thing was constructed, but you've maintained the flow there, so the flow goes through the geotextile. Uh but primarily, it would be the excavated material.
Which means it could be soil, like loose soil.
So so when you say grainy material, Russell, you probably mean something like crushed stone, is that right?
But down at the bottom, it would be a clean crushed stone and then uh further, further, further up, it's it's uh just like an urban fill on the site right now, so it's a a mixture of soil and you know, all sorts of pieces, you know, bricks and things.
Okay, whatever you get from the ground, you're gonna put it back in there and just make it compact, sounds like.
Exactly, yes.
Right, and and Commissioner, we would uh we would wrap the whole thing in filter fabric. And the filter fabric is intended to hold all that soil there so that it it doesn't leak out again.
Right.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, sir.
Okay, uh Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Uh I think Commissioner Sullivan addressed my concern and and you came to a good solution, but I I just wanted to point out because I know we see Massport a lot and and I'm seeing, we have new language and in our ordinance for land subject to coastal storm flowage. And it requires uh that at a minimum, proposed work or activity shall re- result in an improvement over existing conditions of the capacity of the land subject coastal storm flowage. So that'll that'll come up every time now because that is part of our reg, so I just wanted to note that because I think I think we have another item before us tonight where that's been, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I don't see any hands raised and I'm also not seeing anything in our inbox.
Okay, Madeline, uh were you fine with the uh proposed order of conditions?
Yes, yep, we um that's back and forth, I think we're all set.
Fantastic. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a um a motion to uh approve the issue of the ordering conditions and close the hearing.
Still moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Um yeah, I I say aye and make sure we get that uh cleaning frequency of the catch basins captured somehow.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Khan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, before we go to the next item, I just want to uh make a couple of quick announcements about the um about the agenda this evening. Um if anybody's uh on for the Curly Community Center, um we've already um uh handled that hearing. So I don't want you to wait another hour or so to find that out. Um also, the um uh the request for a certificate of compliance for sixty-five uh East India Row. Uh that is also being continued. We're not going to be hearing that this evening. Uh so with that, I would uh call the next item on the agenda, which is a notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one nine four seven and Boston file number twenty twenty-three dash zero three six from G Z A and Geo Environmental Inc. On behalf of Boston Gas Company for the proposed remediation of a coal tar impacted soils in a buried tar tank using in-situ solid solidification stabilization methods located at two twenty Victory Road in Dorchester Resource Areas Land Subject to Coastal Storm Flowage. Um twenty foot uh twenty-five foot waterfront, one hundred foot buffer zone to coast zones to coastal bank, coastal beach and titled flats. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Jesse Edmonds with Boston Gas Company, D V A National Grid. We also have representatives from G Z A and I'll let them chime in here.
Great, thank you. Are they, here we go. Is your representative having a hard time getting unmuted?
Mike, are you there? Mike Gray? I see him, but I can't hear him.
I can request to unmute him in just a moment.
He looks unmuted.
He's, yeah.
Do you have a backup plan?
Yeah, John Colbert, are you on?
Yes, I am.
And V J is also on from G G Z A as well.
Right.
And I think that's it from G Z A.
Okay.
That's all we have uh representing the project at the moment. John or V J, do you want to walk us through the slide deck?
Sure. Um so uh this, this is uh the remediation project at the Commercial Point Project, which is uh uh operated by National Grid. It's the Rainbow Tank property in uh Dorchester. Um it's a former man- manufactured gas plant. And um the remediation is being uh performed under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. And um some of that remediation work will be within the buffer zones.
And John, um just so the commissioners know, uh when you say Massachusetts Contingency Plan, uh you're referring to the um uh state super fund law uh and the remediation will be supervised and managed by a licensed site professional?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Um let's let's go to the next slide. So um if you want, I can go through the background. It's uh it used to be a manufactured gas plant, that's where they made um uh gas or from from coal. Um that that operation was uh typically uh from late eighteen hundreds to the early nineteen hundreds. Um the site is currently um operated by National Grid with a uh liquefied natural gas facility uh for storage and distribution. Uh the work is, the remediation work is being done under the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. Um and as the chair spoke, that it's uh work is being um managed by the uh licensed site professional um who is licensed by the state of Massachusetts.
I think I, I think I fixed my microphone problem, John. I'm sorry about that. Sorry, I'm sorry, everybody. I don't know what uh what happened there, but can you hear me okay?
Perfectly fine.
Okay, um so I'll just start where John left off, so we have uh two areas that are gonna be um included in this area. There's a landscaped area and then there's a support area which is called the customer service area, which we'll just be using for um storage of soil and management of soil. Um and then we also uh have the landscaped area where most of the construction area will be and so if you go to the next slide. We'll talk a little bit about the background of the landscaped area. There was a buried tar tank there that was buried in place in the nineteen sixties. The tank's approximately eighty feet in diameter and it's about ten feet deep or so from its shallowest point near Victory Road. The tank's constructed of uh sheet metal and it has a hard bottom and it's also filled with sand, gravel and all sorts of other debris. It has about two feet of coal tar, which is one of the contaminants we find at the site. Um that's also impacted the groundwater and all the other soils and materials that are inside the tank. And that tank's gonna be remediated remediated via in-situ soil stabilization, solidification, which we'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. Um temporary soil disturbance will be happening within the landscaped area of the site, but not in the supporting area and the customer service area. Next slide, please. So this is a photograph of the landscaped area beneath the cones and up to the top of the hill and down to the bottom of the fence and to the right-hand side to the tree and to the left-hand side to the uh to the signs are where the the uh tank is located. So you can see there's a bit of fill over the top of the tank area that we're gonna need to remove before we can do our remediation. Next slide, please. Uh the customer service area again is just a support area that we're gonna use for the storage of topsoil and some other excess materials that will be shipped offsite. There's no soil disturbance disturbance that'll be planned for that area. And um and we can move on to the next slide and we'll show some plans of those areas. This is the customer service area. Um looking at out at the uh estuary. And it's covered with stone, it's previously developed area and it's just excess space and vacant right now at the facility. Next slide. This is a viewpoint from uh the aerial that shows where the C S A area is to the northeast. And it's actually showing offshore, but it's actually onshore area near Rainbow Park Beach. And then the landscaped area is that L-shaped area to the lower left-hand corner. Next slide. So we're gonna pre-excavate about two thousand cubic yards of soil and overburden over the top of the tar tank to get down to a working platform so we can do the I S S work. Um we're gonna remove nine trees during that process for preparing the site for construction. Uh we have to pre-excavate the soil. Um all that soil will be temporarily stored within the landscaped area. We're expecting it all to be clean soil. And the topsoil will be stripped and then brought over to the C S A area and stored there temporarily until we're done with the project and will be brought back for reuse. Um any water that we generate, which primarily is just contained within the tank area, it's accumulated water that will be treated on-site and disposed offsite. The I S S activities include mixing the soil with grout to stabilize all the materials within the tank, which is the matrix, the coal tar, the groundwater. And that will result coal tar, the groundwater, and that will result in one solid monolith within the entire footprint of that tank area, and basically will stabilize all that material into one large block. The pre-excavated soil will then be used to restore the existing grades, and the topsoil will be replaced and reseated upon the completion of the work. Next slide.
Uh, Mike, quick question. No geotextile?
Excuse me?
No geotextile. It's a soil cap?
Um, that will be done above the tank. I'll talk a little bit more about that for the restoration work that we do.
Okay.
But I wanted to show you the plan that kind of shows where the tar tank is relative to the landscaped area. You can see our pre-cut excavation is pretty substantial because of the steep slope that we have. We're going to excavate down to a fairly flat area, and you can see the cell areas. The ISS is done in small, you know, small cells that are eventually combined into one huge, consistent monolith. So that entire eighty-foot tank will be stabilized down to a depth of about ten feet or so. And you can see some of the other support areas. We have some temporary roads, some temporary laydown areas for equipment and other materials. And so it's a fairly substantial cut, but will restore everything back to normal after we're done. And you can see we have some of the sedimentation controls around the perimeter of the project area as shown, and those will be around all the limits of work that we're working within the near the resource areas. Next slide. So the resource areas we have are, as mentioned, the land subject to coastal storm flowage within the landscaped area, the coastal bank and the tidal flats, one-hundred-foot buffer zones are also going to be encroached upon as part of the work in the landscaped area. Within the CSA, again, we're not doing any soil disturbance, but we are working within the land subject to coastal storm flowage, the coastal bank and coastal beach, one-hundred-foot buffer zones, and also a small portion of the waterfront area, which won't likely even come into play since it's on the very edge of that work limit where we're going to be just driving vehicles and doing, you know, dropping loads off and picking loads of soil up. So this project is not going to directly impact any wetlands or any land underwater. Next slide, please. So this shows the resource area lines, and I don't know if you can see on this scale, but the green shaded areas are the areas that will be disturbed within the hundred-foot buffer zones for the coastal bank and the tidal flats. And then over in the lower right-hand corner of the landscaped areas where the land subject to coastal storm flowage, it will be impacted, and those areas do encroach a little bit on the area that we're going to be doing the remediation in. But again, all the work will be done within the limits of the project, and we do have sedimentation controls around the entire limits of this work area, the sloped work area. Next slide, please. This is the customer service area, which is located near the Rainbow Park Beach. Our work limits do encroach a little bit again on the hundred-foot buffer zone for the coastal bank and coastal beach in this area. And, but we won't be storing any soils within the resource areas here in the lower section. And then on the upper section, we do have another excess materials management area, which will be lined. It'll be stoned. It'll have sumps to control drainage and and stormwater, and will also be, you know, contained within the work limits and the sedimentation barriers that we're planning. And a small portion of that does encroach on, will be located within the hundred-foot buffer zones for the coastal beach and the coastal bank. Next slide. So our mitigation measures are obviously sedimentation controls, staked hay bales and silt fence within the unpaved areas, budding hay bales within paved areas that are, will be portions just of the CSA area. There's some paved locations there that we'll be putting them on. We have second sedimentation barriers will also be put around individual stockpiles, which will include some just straw wattles, just as a secondary protection. Stockpiles will be lined, covered with polyethylene, and then those covers will be secured properly with ropes and sandbags to keep them in place. We have a contractor that'll be responsible for daily inspections and maintenance of the stockpiles, the sedimentation controls, and any, you know, damage will be fixed and dealt with as necessary as quickly as possible. An infiltration trench is also going to be installed with one in the landscaped area that'll help control some of the stormwater flow and the and to reinfiltrate surface water from our large stockpile area that will be in the landscaped area. And that infiltration trench is located outside of the resource areas within the landscaped area. Next. We have a contractor that's going to have to obtain a construction general permit and/or remediation to watering general permit for the project, and they'll also have to submit a stormwater pollution prevention plan for the project for any stormwater plants that they have in place. We have one catch basin that's located on the entire peninsula out there that's located within the landscaped area. That catch basin will be protected with silt sacks surrounded with hay bales to control stormwater that might run off into it during construction. Everything else is just, you know, infiltrated water everywhere else on the peninsula. So we'll obviously try to control the runoff as best possible during during the project itself, and, but there are no catch basins that should be affected for any direct flows to surface water. The infiltration trench is also going to be used to control stormwater, and any storm flow accumulations will be pumped and infiltrated. There's no impervious surface areas that'll be installed either temporary or permanent as part of this project. Next. And our site restoration, we're going to have to remove all the temporary roads, staging areas, the material management areas. The landscape and the CSA area will basically be put back to original conditions and left in original conditions. Disturbed areas within the landscape are going to be loaned and seeded. We're going to replant nine new native red maple trees within the landscaped area to replace the nine trees that are taken away. And then the trees in the seeded areas will be watered and maintained to make sure that they, they grow and survive, and we know that the, the folks at the plant will make sure that we have, we have a really nice lawn area thereafter we're done with the project. Next. So I apologize for the length of this, but the remediation work is required under the MCP to control the source of coal tar that's still left in the tank and the groundwater that is currently impacting some of the surrounding areas. The project will provide an overall benefit to the resource areas located within and adjacent to the project limits. The ISS approach stabilizes soil, water, coal tar, and any other contents of the tank, so there's no more leaching, leaking from the tank, and so on. And then the disturbed areas will be restored and maintained in their current state upon completion. So that's it for the presentation.
Great. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, a couple of quick comments, questions. One is can you move the soil stockpile out of the buffer zone? You're in a very small area, but it wouldn't take much to move it a bit.
The reason that we, we may need that additional area, we can certainly try to stay out of it to begin with, but we're fairly limited on we're trying to stay out of the LNG because there's some critical infrastructure in there, and there's security and access issues within the facility itself that we're trying to avoid, especially during the months of work that we're working, because there's a lot of activity that goes on with the LNG during the winter months. So we included that area. It is a paved area, and whatever stockpiles that are in there are going to be within these constructed cells that are pretty well self-established. So I wouldn't expect that there would be, you know, any impacts to the buffer zone areas. Everything will be self-contained within those units. So I think based on the air, we could conceivably try to stay out of there, but I'd like to keep the option open to have some additional area there if possible in case we do have some additional materials that need to be staged temporarily before they go offsite for disposal.
Okay, if I understand you correctly, the, the soil stockpiles will be contained?
Well, this area is excess material storage, so they'll be built with with jersey barriers around the perimeters. They'll be underlaid with a thick HDPE-type plastic. There'll be a stone layer that's placed over the plastic, and there'll be stump areas within the cells for maintaining any water that accumulates from storm, you know, storm events, snow, or otherwise. So it will be pretty much a self-contained unit. And so there really shouldn't be anything that's able to leave those units once we place the soil in there. We'll line those areas. We'll cover them. So really, the storm flows or storm impacts shouldn't really be much on the soil that's in there, but they'll be pretty much self-contained units, unlike the topsoil, which will be placed on plastic and covered with plastic and rimmed with sedimentation barriers in that bigger area in the south.
Okay, okay. So I assume the soils will be characterized. How long will they remain in sight? Are you anticipating for one hundred and twenty days or?
Well, that's the MCP requirement. I think the contractors, based on the fact that we'd want to be moving these things in and out to, because it is a very limited area. I don't know that we'd be able to manage everything in there at once and leave it there for very long. So the contractors would be trying to move this stuff along, you know, much quicker than a hundred and twenty days. That's almost the duration of the project, which is about five months in duration.
Okay, and to be clear, there's not going to be any trenching in the buffer zone, right?
No trenching in the buffer zone, no.
Okay, I'll let others talk about. Oh, sorry, go ahead. I cut you off.
Just outside of the, you know, the silt fence and the sedimentation or the hay bales that are, that are staked in that area.
Okay, I'll let others talk about the trees. I'm sure that's going to come up. Elena, do you have something?
I don't have anything on this.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, the, I understand your stabilization of the tar, but are you sure it can't leach in the future? Is that approved? Technology stabilizing that, but no leaching at all in the future?
Yeah, it is, and we've, we've done this on a bunch of sites before where we do have, you know, somewhat of a contained unit. We'll shed, we'll basically grade the top of the monolith. It sheds water, and it will have a filter fabric layer, a demarcation layer, and just be able to, you know, so there really shouldn't be any infiltration on that. It's above the groundwater table. So there's also really no way that groundwater is going to come into contact with it. But the stabilization does a few things. It basically makes the monolith, there's less surface area to come in contact with the contaminants that are in it. It stabilizes all the groundwater that's in there, and one of the problems we've had with it now, as it's just sitting there, is that it overtops with water that infiltrates into the tank. So we have some other things that we're going to have to address later on as far as the tar that leaked out of the tank. And that will all be addressed in a later project. So this is really just dealing with the source issue. And this particular way we deal with the soil, the water, and the tar all in one, and it won't leach. It won't, you know, create any other additional problems other than what we have to deal with, you know, from the historical releases from that tank.
Yeah. So the, the, the Conset River area of environmental concern extends up to Commercial Point. I don't know the exact placement drop, but the issue of working in the buffer zone and that, I know there's, there may be an additional criteria or additional prohibition when that may cease. This is for staff more than anything else. That would be the fact of work of this type along the, the AC is a concern.
Well, we did look at it, and the area that the A C E C is located within is primarily within that zone of the landscaped area and that portion of the CSA area, again, which there won't be any land disturbance in there, but it is less than a half acre total that will be working within the A C E C boundary. And so therefore, there's really, you know, it's kind of below the threshold for looking for a NEPA decision on the project.
What is the threshold?
It's greater, greater than a half acre, I believe, of land within the A C E C. And I think I, I think we have that in the NOI where we discussed how much area of the A C E C would be impacted, but I can get you that information if, if you need it.
I just wanted to double check. The intent of these is to mandate, is there any idea? Whenever we're here, so we don't cross any lines, and that's what I was sure. If, if the state looked at it and said, yeah, you guys are right, that's you know, the value of the budget exceeds the potential disruptions of, you know, temporary storage. Yeah, I'd just like staff to take a look at that and verify with the state we're, we're okay here. That's all. That's all I had.
Okay, okay. Elena, I'm sure you can give a call. You probably know someone over at NEPA these days. Our former executive secretary, Mr. Moreno?
Yeah, so I can reach out about that. And I'm sorry, it was cutting out a bit. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on, on what I'm asking.
Yeah, the same with me, but I think Commissioner Sullivan was raising the point that this may undergo state review because it's in, within an A C E C area. And Mike was saying that it didn't reach the appropriate threshold to trigger NEPA review. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
Commissioner Long?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So thank you for the presentation, Michael. That was really informative. I think we all know this tank. I was wondering if there's a reason that you all aren't planting more trees. I know you're doing a one-for-one replacement, but are there utility or subsurface conditions concerns that are making planting more trees not feasible in the landscaped area?
I think the primary thing is that the facility itself has certain security requirements for, you know, both visual, being able to visually see from the facility out to the roads and such. They do have a bunch of security along the fence lines and security within the inner fence lines that we have to keep going during the project as well. So I think there is some line-of-sight requirements for National Grid and this being an LNG facility. And a lot of things changed after nine eleven as far as their needs to, you know, have higher levels of security out there. So I think the, the thought was that we would replace the trees at the locations that we took them down. And unfortunately, they're mature trees that we were taking down, unfortunately, to get the work done. But hopefully, the, the other trees will, will grow mature in some, you know, quicker period of time.
Right, yeah. It's hard to argue with the security concerns. I, that kind of wraps it up for me, that.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. So keeping in mind the security requirements, can the number of trees not be increased?
Um, I mean, there may be some additional locations within the landscaped area that we can do it. I'm not sure along the street is the appropriate place to do that. But there are some areas that are kind of closer to Route ninety-three. We could add a few additional there if it was something that would, you know, you think would be helpful. I'm sure, you know, nobody likes to look at the big, the big elevated highway there on that side. I think there's there is a new path that's going there, a bike path that's also going there, which might shade that path from the facility a little bit better. But those would be the areas that I think we would suggest there could be some without it really being a, a big issue security-wise for them.
Yeah, whatever you can do to maximize the number of trees. I agree with Commissioner Long here. Replacing mature trees with the same number of saplings isn't quite exactly a replacement, so whatever can be done. Also, I would have thought for security these days, you know, there's more technological ways to do that, but if you look into that, that'd be great. So then I think Chair Parker had a question about geotextile. Did you address that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so there won't be any soil storage without the protection to avoid any leakage into the existing ground, right?
Yes, it'll all, all the stockpiles that are, that are maintained will be covered or they'll be lined with polyethylene on the ground and covered and to shed water and secured properly so that that cover stays in place.
In, in one of the pictures you shared, there were cones. Is that the extent of the leakage that was detected?
That was one of the test pits that we excavated under an RDA we filed back in twenty twenty to get some additional information on the tank itself, just so that we kind of knew what the contents were. We knew what we were dealing with when they finally got in there to do some of the mixing. So we excavated out a portion of that area just to observe it. We also did a, a mixed design test where we took samples of the materials that were in there, and we did a mixed design to develop what the grout application and the percentage of the Portland cement that we're going to add for that mix, which will all be, you know, monitored, and there'll be testing of the monolith afterwards to look at the strength of the material, which we're only looking to which we're only looking to strengthen it to about 50 PSI, which is almost like a dense soil for the most point. We also have hydraulic conductivity testing that has to be done to make sure that it meets the hydraulic, hydraulic conductivity criteria, which I believe is one times 10 to the minus six. And also, we test it for residual NAPL, where they basically do a, a test in the laboratory of the stabilized material to see if any of the coal tar comes out of the materials. And all that testing will be done on a regular basis several times within the monolith so that we have a, a good picture that everything meets the requirements that we designed for.
Appreciate that. I do have a few questions if you want to, if you can keep the answers brief. What is the current extent of the leakage and the leaching?
Right now, that, so that tank was installed in 1885. So they used it as a tar storage tank. It's one of the first, you know, above-ground sheet metal riveted tanks, I think, that they ever installed at this size. So the way it's connected to the bottom of the tank, which is a hardened surface, it's probably concrete of some sort. It probably leaked out of the seam between the sheet metal and the bottom of the, bottom of it. But we have some tar that's out within Victoria or Victory Road. That's right, you know, just to the south of where the tank is. There's a fairly large accumulation there. So we're going to do NAPL recovery in that area. Once we get all this work done, there'll be a little, you know, shed that we have to install. We'll pump that into a tank and just dispose of it offsite until we get it to a point where, you know, we feel like we don't have any mobile NAPL left there to go after. And then we can just, you know, close that site, close the site off. That's going to be the last piece of work we have to do under the MCP that we know of at this point.
Do you have a picture of all the affected area?
We have some reports that, that are available and we can kind of, it's, they're discussed in there. But they're basically right on, along the southern end of the tank in Victory Road. We did find some stuff on the opposite side of Victory Road that we did some recovery of and we never saw much of it come back. And then we also did some wells on the Old Colony Yacht Club property to determine the limits and we didn't find anything on that property. So it's pretty well confined to the area beneath Victory Road.
And, and nothing has reached any of the resource areas?
No, not based on the wells that we did at the O C Y C property. Those were to determine the limits of where this, where that material was. And we do have some dissolved materials and groundwater, but, you know, through our risk assessment, those concentrations aren't really going to affect anything from a human risk standpoint and/or environmental standpoint.
So it's negligible?
Yes.
Okay, a couple more quick, very quick ones. Why do you expect the excavated soil to be clean? I thought I heard you say that.
Because we've done a bunch of borings in that area. We've done a bunch of test pits and other things. And usually, we don't find any real contamination until we get to the water level within the, within the tank. So that tank holds water still and holds, you know, essentially whatever infiltrates in there. And, but everything above that was just fill material that never came in contact with any of the contaminants in the tank. So therefore, you know, and then the ground, the real groundwater level is below the level of the tank. So that, and that would be where some other dissolved constituents could touch soil. But that's a good 20 feet below some of those areas that we're going to excavate.
Good last question. You said it's not going to directly, the work is not going to directly impact the wetland or the land underwater. Did you mean to suggest there may be some indirect impacts?
No, we're just not doing any work that's, you know, going to be within a direct wetland area and/or land underwater. It's, everything's within a buffer zone or one of the, or the land subject to coastal storm flowage. So upwind areas that are adjacent to the levels.
Thank you. Thanks, Chair Parker.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I just have a question. First of all, would like to thank the applicant because I think the presentation was very complete. So some of the questions I had are gone away. But the one question I have is whether or not any thought has been given to trying to plant bigger trees than saplings. In other words, I understand the issue that you're talking about with security. I think none of us are prepared to argue with that appropriately. But it also is true that if you've got bigger trees that you're taking down, presumably you could replant bigger trees where they were. So the question is, why saplings?
We can certainly look into that. If we have, if there's a local supplier of native, you know, red maples is what we thought would be the best option because there are some maples that are already currently there. But we could look at finding some larger, you know, larger, more mature trees to plant. And that's something we could certainly have the contractors look and see if we have a local supplier. As long as we can find a native variety that's, that's going to, you know, basically be good for the area. We can look for something larger than just the saplings.
Well, that would be great. And maybe what you can do is, you know, talk, talk to staff about it. I mean, I'm sure that the bigger trees frankly are going to be more expensive than the saplings. But, you know, this is, I hope, a for-profit enterprise that you're representing. And I think it, you know, is appropriate that you try to find bigger trees. So if you can do that and get back to staff about the results of your search, that would be great. And I have no further questions.
Commissioner Herbst?
I could add something. When you say saplings, I'm not sure what exactly you mean, but.
Yeah.
We are working on like two or three inch caliber trees.
Yeah, let's table this for now. We're going to, it's pretty clear. We're going to ask you to come back with a more developed tree inventory slash plan. So we can hash that out with staff. Commissioner Herbst, what do you have?
I, I have a question or a concern about time of year. And we, I know we always have special conditions about if there's a storm moving equipment. But I, I guess I'm wondering, given that this is in a flood zone and, and the flood zones, you know, could be exceeded, how long a period of time is there where the, the contaminant is exposed but not stabilized? And what you're thinking about that? I, I just have this picture of a big overwash event while that's exposed and, and things washing around.
Yeah, I can answer that question. So when we expose the top of the tank, we'll be a good two feet above the level of where the impacted soil and water and tar are. The tar is in the very bottom of the tank. It's more dense than water. So it sits in the very bottom, which is almost like eight to 10 feet below the, the highest area that we have or the, the lowest area that we have within that. We will be working above the contaminated zone. So we'll never have anything exposed until we start doing the ISS mixing. So those mixing cells will be done individually. So when we're doing the work, we actually are digging a small area of soil. We're bringing in the grout, we're mixing it over the day. We're looking at the consistency. We're collecting the samples. And then at the end of the night, you cover that cell up and you allow it to cure. And usually, the curing process usually happens like fairly quickly. So that, you know, it'll be somewhat hardened by the time we get there the next day. And we'll continue to harden over the 28 days that we're going to test it for compression, compressive strength testing. So there'll never be like a full area of the tank exposed at once. We can't do that. And it's not a, not an appropriate way to go about that. But we also, you know, we'll keep the areas that are open. And we're working on as far as the cells, because these are limited, probably 20 to, you know, 40 to 50 yard cubic yard squares or, or areas within the cell. And they'll be done within a day. You have to complete the cells within a day because the concrete's just going to set up anyway. So you end up having to, you know, get these smaller cells done based on the time that you have in the day to mix them and to get them to the proper consistency to then let them sit overnight. So those will be, there won't really be anything exposed for any given period of time that's not either stabilized or being worked on within a, within a day.
Okay. And pardon my ignorance because I, I think you really probably just answered the question. But I just want to understand if, if, if we have a very large event and water pours in there and overtops it, something to be concerned about or, or you're saying it's, things are going to be?
There will be a short period of time. The actual work that's going to happen for the, the mixing within that larger tank area is estimated to be between like 18 days and maybe 20 some odd days. So I think, you know, there, there is a short window that it's going to happen. It will be in the fall after like hurricane season and some other, you know, you know, worrisome areas. I know we get nor'easters, nor'easters during the, you know, the fall months and the winter months. But, but again, you know, we, I mean, we've never seen any flooding get up to that level anyway. But obviously, there's always a chance that that, something like that can happen. But there's a short window between the time that we get down to our working platform that, you know, again, will be up above that area. And as we're working along that 18 to 20 day mixing period, most of the portions of the area will be, you know, functionally secured because we'll be have, have mixed everything in place. And, you know, there'll still be some areas that are exposed. But I think one of the things we could conceivably do is we could work, what we want to do is work from the center out because this, this tank is fairly fragile on the outside. It's like a quarter inch steel. It's, it's not a very, it's not like it's a brick and mortar type tank. So we have to work from the interior out. And, but one of the things we might be able to do is work the center of the thing first and then the area that's within the storm flowage area. We could start working on that southern perimeter and, and get that completed as quickly as possible once we get the center portion done. So that if there was any storm flowage, that would all be stabilized in place if we had a, an event of some sort. But I think the window's fairly short that we're going to actually have all that stuff exposed where, you know, could erode or otherwise in a storm. But it's also at the very limits of where that, you know, 100 foot storm limit is. So there's very little of that tank that could be, well, and who knows? I mean, if you have a thousand, you know, a thousand year flood or something, that might be a little more than that, but.
That's what I worded it. And, and you're excavating down, right? You're going to be.
Yeah, but we're still, I mean, it is a pretty steep area. So, and, you know, if it reaches the road, we're still going to be a couple of feet above the road. And it extends, you know, a few feet into the area that we're working in. And again, I don't, you know, we could, I know if there is any major storms that are being, National Grid's always very good about making sure you stabilize the site. We'd have the contractors do whatever we could at that point to make sure that, you know, it's stabilized enough. If we knew there was something catastrophic coming, we would make some plans to, to stabilize the site at that point, but.
Okay, thank you for addressing that. And Chair Parker, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, whether that, an additional special condition on that or? Or whether you think it's covered by the ones we have?
Yeah, I think it's probably covered. I think the, the issue here is if the weather report suggested, you know, that type of storm. I'm pretty sure that they would get stabilization or protective measures in place because that would actually cost you a lot more, right, in the remediation process if something like that happened. So I, we can put something like that in there, but I'm pretty confident that the appropriate measures would be taken place just as a matter of economy.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so with that, I think we've got a little bit of work. I know that you had a lot of comments on the conditions that we proposed. And so we'll get back to you on those. And they were good comments, I think, you know. I, we don't need to get into them tonight because I think we're going to continue this because it sounds like we're going to need something on landscaping and trees. And so we get the outstanding order of conditions and then maybe give some thought to a more detailed explanation as to the measures that will be taking place, if the weather forecast, you know, the predictions that we're going to get a major event like that, how you would, what sort of protective measures would be put in place. And so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved?
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Connan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I vote aye. So that's six, nothing. Okay, thank you. We'll see you next time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for D P file number 0061951 in Boston, file number 2023-041 from Beals and Thomas Inc. on behalf of the McClellan Highway Development Company LLC for the proposed installation of a 20-foot wide community path generally parallel to the southeastern property line of the Suffolk Downs redevelopment project located at the William F. McClellan Highway, East Boston Resource Areas, Riverfront Area, 25-foot waterfront area, 100-foot buffer to inland bank. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am. I'm Liz Clark with Beals and Thomas. And I also believe there should be Mike Barowski from H Y M.
I was speaking into mute. I apologize. This is Mike Barowski with H Y M. So we're the developer of Suffolk Downs and was going to introduce Liz, but she just introduced herself. So great.
Fantastic. Okay. So yours?
Great. I think we can, I can kick off the presentation. And go to the next slide. Perfect, thank you. So I just wanted to start off with just a, just a, I guess, an overview and a, and a quick reminder to the Conservation Commission. We haven't been before you for a little bit of just the, a quick overview of Suffolk Downs. So, you know, we went through a very detailed approval process, master plan approval process with the city of Boston, City of Revere and through, and with MIPA. And ultimately, what was approved was 16.2 million square feet of uses, 40 acres of open space. And the mix of uses includes 10,000 units of housing, which is of course important for this region. In addition to that, five, about 5 million square feet of, of office uses, 800 hotel rooms and about 450,000 square feet of retail. And this, this view right here, the, the Boston side of the site is in the, kind of the left side. And then the, the Revere side of the site is on the right side of the, of the plan. This is just a rendering showing what it would look at, look like at full buildout. But we can go to the next slide. Nope. Actually, that one. So one of the, one of the images, images didn't show up here, but I'm just going to zoom in to, on, on the right side of the screen. This is a zoomed in, a view of the, the Boston side of the site at the Suffolk Downs T Station. So this is the, I guess this is the south, the, the southern southeast corner of the site. And this is where our proposal for a community path is right along the southeastern edge of the property, as you read before. So I will, I just, I wanted to say that the purpose of this community path is to help provide access to Boston residents to the Revere side of the site. We have started construction on the Revere side of the site. And what's, and what's our initial development phase of the project? Moving forward, we'd be moving, you know, moving over the development to the Boston side of the site. But in the interim, we think it's important to provide access for those Boston residents to, you know, to get across the site in a safe manner and so that they can access the retail, open space and other amenities that we're, you know, starting to build out on the Boston, on, on the Revere side. So with that, I can turn it over to Liz and she can walk you through the plan in more detail.
Hi. So could you maybe scroll to the next slide, please, and go one more down? So I'm Liz Clark. I'm the professional engineer for the project with Beals and Thomas. I'm going to walk you through the basic design of the path, how, what our resource areas that we're impacting, you know, why we're here. And then go into the deep design a bit more to cover how we were thinking about incorporating sustainable measures, adhering to the overall resiliency plan that Suffolk Downs is committed to. And then the public benefits that we're going to incorporate into this project. So we have about a 1,500 linear foot path that equates to about a quarter of a mile, starting on our PH left, connecting to the Suffolk Downs T Station and going up northerly to connect into our first phase of development in Revere. The path has been designed to, as Mike showed on those previous slides, to work with our master plan and will ultimately provide not just the community path with the cyclists and walkers and joggers, but also work for fire access for buildings that are proposed just above it. So because of that, we did design it at a 20-foot width that adheres to the NFPA, the National Fire Protection Association requirements for a one-way fire lane. So if you could go to the next slide. So for the resource areas, we're near down along our eastern property line where you see the green adjacent to the Wally Street note there is an intermittent stream. This was delineated on break and slope for the bank. This was delineated on, uh, break and slope for the bank. There's no associated bordering vegetated wetlands with it. We do have a twenty-five foot local riverfront associated with that. And then the twenty-five foot local waterfront. So the local riverfront did get lost on this, um, graphic here. It does roughly align with the back of the path, which is shown in blue. But you can see it in more detail on page one eighty-seven in your notice of intent. The local waterfront zone, uh, is roughly at the top of the path and is a dark blue line. And just above is the hundred foot buffer zone for the intermittent stream. To the right of the page is Sales Creek, which also roughly goes with the city line. And Sales Creek does discharge to Belle Isle in La, in La, in the larger Rummy Marsh. So the buffer zone for, uh, Sales Creek, which is shown in pink and two different sections on this plan, um, is associated with a, uh, Rummy Marsh A C U C. And we do have some areas of the path in there towards downward, it says like city of Boston. One thing to note, as part of this notice of intent, we are also asking the commission to reconfirm the limit of land subject to coastal storm flowage on the project site. We have been working with FEMA for a number of years now to develop a letter of map revision. And that has been achieved and it was included, uh, pages one eighty and one eighty-one of your notice of intent to show the new flood lane. Uh, this was a, like I said, years-long process, multi-stakeholder involvement to get a more accurate model of the region. And specifically as Sales Creek goes under Bennington Street, it then discharges or is controlled by a pump station on Bennington Street. And in times of rain and a high tide, that pump station will provide relief to the overall drainage basin of Sales Creek. And that wasn't included in the initial analysis. And that was purposeful. Uh, D C R did not have a, an approved operation and maintenance agreement for that FEMA accepted. And we were able to bring those parties together, get agreement and put a more accurate model of the flood lane. So it's been reduced down to, uh, elevation nine point two roughly Boston city base. And there's now only a small portion of it peeking up near the H series wetland stream. Um, and it's completely outside the limits of this project. So within the local waterfront, we're largely proposing landscape improvements as well as grading to help us achieve some of our resiliency goals, which I'll go through. And within the local waterfront zone, we do have the majority of the path located. So we understood this is a very sensitive resource area. So, um, our thinking went towards how can we minimize our impacts and improve our impacts? So if you actually go two slides back up to the pictures. Thank you. Um, these are our existing conditions. So we did align the path with an existing art path out on site. The bottom picture I'm going to focus in on, you can see the little white square off in the distance. That's our first building, uh, Amaya for Phase One R. And that's where we're again providing that connectivity to. To minimize our impacts, we did align the closest edge of the path to the wetland with this existing path. And then we did a study, what's out there? Uh, we sent two of our wetland scientists out there to evaluate the existing vegetation associated with the intermittent stream, as well as to get a little bit more detail on what this path is. Uh, we did a couple of different cross-sections of the vegetation and found a mix of invasive and native species and then did some digging in this path. So we found the first four inches to be what you're seeing, a gravelly material. But from there, we weren't able to penetrate it. So we did do both hand augers, augering, um, you know, out there with a hand auger and then also tried to penetrate it with a metal speed. And to be clear, this isn't me jumping on a shovel. It's a two hundred plus pound man trying to get in there. So we found that we had a kind of an impermeable condition due to just historic use and heavy compaction. So moving forward, it's a goal to improve that. So we opted to go with a porous pavement that will have a significant base course underneath for our path to help promote more absorption of storm water into the soils and improve the overall hydrology. And of course, with our off-grading, the new soils will be fluffy, although they won't be as heavy or compacted and will enable root growth and vegetation to come into it. So these were our big, um, ideas on minimizing the impact. And then we also did want to address your increased storms that are predicted to come with climate change. So when we were modeling the change in cover types, we did bump up our storm depths to the six inch for a ten-year storm and then above an eight inch for a hundred year. Um, and then with our new landscaping plan, we are going to mitigate invasive species. So if you could go, I think it's two slides down again. Thank you. So with our plantings, we have two goals here, right? Again, mitigating the invasive species, but we also have this site that is comprised of urban fill. And historically, not always the best materials were used. We have in our other publicly accessible spaces are programmed to have a thin cap of one foot minimum to protect the public from contact with that existing urban fill. But when you're next to a wetland, you can't just go right up to that bank and chop out a foot of material. So we're designing this landscape hedge to be what we're calling a living fence. So we're trying to incorporate our good native species, promote habitat, but then also keep people away from the soils that haven't been removed and replaced. So it's a very thick, dense planting. In terms of resiliency, Suffolk Downs has committed to a multi-step, multi-stage plan. The first has been implemented and that was the excavation of the Central Common, which happened, between Sales Creek and that horseshoe pond there, where we increased the flood storage of Sales Creek. And one of our next main things that we'll be doing when we start rolling out the roadways is we'll have those raised. Our predicted twenty-seventy base flood elevation is nineteen and a half. So we'll be designing all of our buildings to have a minimum of a first floor elevation twenty point five to twenty-one point five, depending on use. And this path is intended to stay in place and serve those buildings eventually. So we will be raising it a bit. Um, the existing grade out there is around elevation sixteen. We'll be raising it to elevation eighteen to twenty, kind of depending on where you are in that path. And then for the public improvements, I mean, Mike spoke to this earlier. Our main goal is to provide connectivity from the Orient Heights neighborhood into these new buildings that we're creating over in Revere. We're very excited to promote cyclist infrastructure and to align with regional goals that have been identified to connect these Boston Greenway, more over to Ocean Ave and Revere and bring people into the site. This is really a part of site activation. As I mentioned before, this will function ultimately as fire access. So we have incorporated hydrants periodically throughout the, um, the path. And which we also have a water line serving those, which is also again redundancy on a infrastructure side for the water system that will eventually be installed to serve the greater redevelopment. Because we are in a bit of a remote area, we do have pedestrian level lighting that is shining away from the intermittent stream incorporated into that. Under initial conditions, we think the path will be operating dawn to dusk, but will eventually transition to being open twenty-four, seven. So lighting has been provided in here as well as blue light, um, call boxes. So with that, I think I can leave it there with you guys. Do you have any questions?
Sure, great, thank you, Liz. Okay, um, just, uh, want to clarify one thing. As far as, um, confirming the new, uh, delineation, um, of the flood zone with the, uh, recent low mark. Um, I'm not sure what the process is for us to do that. I'm, I've been searching procedurally for the last couple of days, um, to understand what that entails. And I really can't find anything and I've talked to Eleanor, talked to Commissioner Herbst. Um, my, my understanding is that, you know, that, that, um, flood map amendment, uh, was sent to a public official, Mayor Wu, uh, and it goes into effect, I think it's sometime in October. I'm not sure there's anything that we do as a commission. Um, and I don't think it really impacts your N O I here, whether we confirm or not confirm. Uh, so I'm interested in, um, what your take is on the process and why you asked us to confirm the, um,
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we confirmed, I guess, we provided an O R A D back in twenty seventeen. Confirming the resource areas on site, that's good for three years. Every N O I we've come in subsequently, we've reconfirmed or re-walked in those lines. Now that there's a change, we need to, I think the commission needs to acknowledge it because with the previous line, this project would have been inland subject to coastal storm.
Hmm, so yeah, so that's my question. Um, it seems to me like a, we would have to issue another, um, O R A D, right? Or you were looking for an amendment to the previous O R A D. I'm not, I guess what I'm saying is outside of that process, I don't know that we taking a vote tonight saying we're confirming something has any legal effect whatsoever. Cause the O R A D, the existing O R A D is expired, so that can't be amended. And my understanding is they're very rarely amended if they've ever been amended.
Yeah, no, I'm following you, I'm just thinking a little bit. It's a good question. Um, I believe you can confirm the resource areas through approving the notice of intent as well, though.
Yeah, I've just never heard of it. It has not come in front of us, so I apologize if it's, uh, standard procedure. I've, I've not heard of it and I don't, I think that we can, um, it, we can issue an order of conditions for this project. Uh, but I'm reluctant to include in the motion that we're confirming a change in the, um, uh, floods, flood zone area until it actually takes effect, uh, in October. Um, or no, not until it actually takes effect, but it will take effect in October based on the, um, map amendment that, um, excuse me, FEMA has already approved.
Could I ask a question about?
Yeah, please do.
Well, I'm just curious when you're planning to start work, whether it's before October? Cause I think in effect, what you're asking us to do is to jump the gun a little bit because it is in a, I assume it will be accepted in October, but it is in an appeal period. So I, I think that raises issues for us and I'm wondering what.
I think it's an administrative period just to allow them to actually update the maps that they've accepted the line and they've gone through.
I thought I, I did look at it today too. I thought I read about a ninety day appeal period, but I could be mistaken.
So I guess Liz, when is the work supposed to start?
Um, so the work would start with the initial site prep. I think it would be flagged. I want to say early this fall.
Hmm.
And that it's mid-July.
Okay, okay, so, um, does any real work start? It sounds like you're doing site prep. Does any, any actual construction of the path begin before the, um, map amendment goes into effect?
Um, I'm just, given that that's October, that's pretty quick from right now. So I think we could say that we'd probably be pretty close with it.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, it's interesting. Uh, again, we've never had this request before. And again, procedurally, um, uh, Eleanor and I, uh, have looked at this. Commissioner Herbst has looked at it and I just don't, I just don't know what we can do about that at this point. Um, if you had filed, um, or, uh, if you filed an N R A D, um, and we issued, uh, an O R A D, that, that would be different. Um, I think that would be the proper procedural way to do it. Though with it taking effect in October, that seems, um, a little wasteful, but. But anyways, Commissioner Herbst, I'm going to ask you, um, I'm thinking we can still issue an order of conditions for this without confer. Well, I guess, I don't know what the term is you're asking for, Liz. Um, reconfirm or confirm, uh, what FEMA has arrived at, right? I mean, what do you think, Commissioner Herbst?
I think we could do that. I think it, it, uh, Liz is pointing out that it, it does change. I don't know whether it changes anything in terms of what we could or would permit, but I think if we were doing that, we'd have to see the plans with the current flood zone.
It's, oh, the current flood.
Yeah, current flood zone, yep.
So.
I know I'm going to have other questions that, that might not get resolved tonight. So maybe we can sort of hold on this or think about it and.
Okay, let's, let's, let's think about it because, and, and again, um, it'll give us some time to figure out. Like again, I can't find anything. And Liz, if you can find something about this process, other than what we've discovered, um, that would be good. Um, Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Okay. I don't have anything else. Um, I just noted homework for myself to try to look into this further and see if, if other commissions have maybe dealt with it.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you.
How much, uh, uh, rainwater can you deal with, with the permeable pavement? Is that just to keep the white rain away?
So for the porous pavement.
Yeah.
So we've designed the reservoir to capture a minimum of the one inch.
Okay. All right, uh, and the other question, um, when it snows out, what, what are your plans for that? To keep this open, I assume you're going to keep it open.
Yep, um, just, at this time, we wrote the O and M to prohibit standing insulting because of the porous pavement.
Right, so you'll, you'll plow it and people will take their chances. Cause it looks pretty shaded in there, I just, I just wonder, you know, a nice plow job, uh, yeah. Ice and everything else and that, you know, if somebody falls, somebody's going to run out there and solve the hell out of it.
So, we knew kind of going into this too, that porous pavement does require a lot of maintenance and that we're going to have to keep an eye on it. Um, but in terms of the, the standing and salting, we're just going to have to really try to not do that.
Yeah, I'm thinking your, your, your snow removal may be in the terms of a, like those little bobcats with the brush. And you actually want to brush the foolish thing off and there's no snow there to pack down and become ice, that's all. But I don't want to tell you how to do it, but that would be nice to have you investigate that. Would that be part of your snow removal or your snow control situation? So that we wouldn't be tempted to ice, because you're going to protect people, you can't. Is that water line going to be activated as soon as you complete the pass? Or is that just there dead till we go a little further down?
I think I have to talk to you about that in a different forum on how we handle that. Um, but open to both suggestions on if we want to install it or need it and have it fully disinfected and active and blowing it off. Or if we do want to leave it dead and then do our disinfection and test, um, later or again.
Curious what you were doing.
Yeah.
You don't want to dig here twice, is the name of the game.
You got it.
All right, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Long?
Hello, Liz, uh, thank you for your presentation. Um, I liked some of the information you provided on the goals of that, uh, restoration planting area. So it sounded like two goals. And tell me if I'm wrong, it's mid- And tell me if I'm wrong, it's mitigating invasive species, right?
Correct.
The living fence piece, making sure people don't come into contact with contaminants. Okay, so I'm wondering, and it was a little hard for me to tell, even though you, you had a lot of good vegetation information, what is currently growing in the area that you're proposing planting in?
A variety of species.
Right.
So we did include a report when our wetland scientists went out. Hang on, let me just pull it up, so we saw a mix of bittersweet, elm, black cherry, black locusts, lance leaf, plantain, grass, molten flora, rosa.
Right.
Norway maple, old field aster, porcelain berry, and some ashley's maple, so they did say it's kind of mixed. It's not as straight as some of our other areas on site where it's just all frag. So we have, we do have buckthorn as well, and aster, so there's, it's kind of scrubby, is the way I would describe it right now.
Right. So I'm thinking that with kind of that mishmash, that mix, I mean, of invasive plants, and then plants that aren't technically invasive on the Massachusetts list, but highly aggressive, like I think mugwort was somewhere in your filing, which is a very, very aggressive weed, but isn't listed as invasive in Massachusetts for some reason. And then, and then some of the native plants too. I'm wondering whether those existing invasive plants may butt up against your restoration plantings, or you know, outcompete with them? Or if there's, there's been some thought to control of invasive before, during the active restoration?
So one thing I should say, so largely where we're proposing our living fence does correspond to like the limit of grading, so areas that we know we're going to disturb. But we do have our MIPA commitments for invasive species mitigation. So we will be going out and doing field tagging and probably a little bit more in depth as we get into construction on identifying core areas. That's just a very intensive exercise to do right now upfront to include in this filing. So I mean, we'd be open to working with the agent during that process.
Right, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah, there was some thought to that.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's perfect, because we don't, we don't want plantings going in where they're going to be interspersed with weeds immediately. So that's more or less it, although the one thing I was reading in your filing was mentioning, it sounded like improving public waterfront access, but also that living fence, making it so that people can't get too close to the water. So how, how, how are you thinking straddling that line? Are people, people be able to view the intermittent stream?
So that's, that is, yeah, that is exactly it. Like, we can't have people just because of environmental concerns, really going up and into the stream. But we are going to provide the ability to, for one, be there. Right now, it's not open in this area, so be there and be able to view the stream or the area.
Perfect, okay. And then, are there any thoughts for temporary fences or control measures to keep people from going into the living fence area while it's still establishing? I'm just wondering if that's been, you know, on the table.
We will likely use temporary construction fencing, just to keep people out of the area, that's usually a standard security measure. We will likely also incorporate some level of fencing for security, just to keep out encampments. So there will be those elements added in. The construction fencing likely won't stay as long as like the full establishment period, so we could always put up signage as well during time.
Got it, yeah, I think, yeah, signage always helps, absolutely.
Yeah, right, letting them know.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that really wraps up my questions, because with our waterfront area where it's almost an either or, either it's maintaining the undisturbed vegetative cover or maintaining a restored strip of vegetative cover. So I want to make sure we're not straddling the fence too much between those, but that wraps it up for me.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just in case this informs anyone's questions, Liz, I did find, so this is good, we learned something tonight, that applicants may seek review of wetland boundaries through any of three processes, notice of intent, an ANRAD, or an RDA. So it's appropriate for you to seek this determination through the NOI. And the map that you provided us is good documentation. The question is, is it? The, the question is really its finality, which Commissioner Herbst brought up. And and I did forget, and you brought it up, signage, something we've always talked about with Suffolk Downs, and they've been good about it, and I'm glad you and Commissioner Long talked about that, because I forgot I got all involved in this issue here. Commissioner Condon, what do you have?
Thanks, Sarah Parker, yeah, good discussion. Liz, the, the point you made about the path being impermeable, but I would have thought, you know, it's, it's pretty permeable, but is, is your finding that it's not for the most part?
Oh, the current path out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Like I said, we had a 200 man, pound man, 200 plus pound man, jumping on a shovel, and he couldn't break that surface. And then we tried again the hand augering. So the first couple of inches is like that loose gravelly material, but it's been there since the 1930s and been used for maintenance and access to the track. So I have a lot of like tractors and heavy equipment, possibly horses as well, over the years, on that path that is just kind of, but like, really hammered it down.
Over decades, in fact, right?
Century.
Almost a century, so does that mean when it rains now, you could see water puddling on top of that?
I think we have seen some puddling. You saying this makes me regret not being out there the past few weeks to see what we have. But so I guess, just to pause there, though, it has two different paths to go to. So it's not necessarily a depressed low point, because you do have the stream on one side. And then the track, this is a fun fact, it was the only confined animal feeding operation in New England. This triggers a big EPA permit, so it was then, when this happened, like 2012, was then designed to contain all the runoff and treat it before discharge in the production area, so we do have some gravel trenches nearby. So there's mitigation measures to or paths for the water to go. So just because you have an impermeable surface, doesn't mean you have puddles.
Sure, sure, maybe it's not a depression, so then we would see that it is running off of that impermeable surface onto both sides, or one side. You know, it would just be good to have that kind of confirmation, because it's possible, I mean, I, I believe it, if it's been compacted over so many decades and almost a century, then it probably has gotten there. We see that even if a truck goes over the corners of some lawns, it happens there. So that's interesting. On, on the map side, what triggered the update of the map? Do you know?
Which of the FEMA, yeah. An investigation into what we have and what we, so I guess probably the big first thing that triggered it was our resiliency analysis. So through the MIPA process, we worked with a variety of stakeholders, CZM was one of them. And they, they really pushed us, and we worked with them and came out with a great plan to ensure that we weren't impacting offsite projects by, because again, we're raising all our roads, right? So we're adding a level of fill. And to prove that, we had to do some pretty hefty modeling. So we already had worked with FEMA, got their, their models. And then as we're working through that analysis, we're refining them and found that discrepancy. So found that the pump station that we're eventually going to improve wasn't accounted for at all. So that drove our thinking on to working with FEMA to get a more accurate map. And just one note on that appeal period as well, the appeal period listed in the LoMar currently is for insurance purposes only, and it's not to question the limits of the floodplain, that has been fully accepted by FEMA.
I see. So is this conditional upon improvement of the pump house then?
The LoMar, no. The LoMar was developed to include the current day pump house going as it is.
I see.
When we get down to, I think, phase four of our redevelopment, we do have commitments to reevaluate that whole floodplain model and see how the pump house is doing. And at that time, we may improve it.
But for right now, they had completely ignored the existence of this current pump house?
FEMA did previously, and again, that was because DCR, who owns the pump house, did not have an approved operation and maintenance agreement adhering to FEMA's standards, so that's now been put in place. And then we've given them the updated model, which has been vetted through. And like I said, this was a multi-year process. It was a big celebration when we got it.
Yeah, I totally get it. So I'm, I'm just curious about if you have a rendering of the 50 years from now, you know, the, the commission, that's something I'd like to see of where we will be, let's say, right now it would be 2073. If you have that kind of rendering to share, I looked in the NOI, I couldn't see that.
So a rendering of the master plan or the various phases with the.
Of 2070.
2070?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was all included in our MIPA documents, which are publicly accessible. So again, we did do that huge study back then, and we have, through our FEIR certificate, all these resiliency measures committed to. And we did include various renderings of what the site looks like under build, no build conditions with the flood analysis versus our mitigation were available there.
Oh, yeah, I, I don't doubt it, but in this specific project, though, to make like informed decision here, it'd be good to have that kind of information, how much of the path would be underwater, you know, it'd be good to know that.
So our 2070 flood elevation is predicted to be at 19.5, so this path does have to go back down to existing grade, so we do have portions of it that would be at elevation 18. Give me one second here. Just want to look at a plan, so it's, it's, as you get back to like the Suffolk Downs station, we are getting a little bit lower, that's where we're at elevation 18, so that would be in your 2070, 100 year flood scenario, that would be flooded. My advice would be to not be out walking or cycling, usually these uses aren't used during those storm months. But then we do, as we rise up to meet the buildings, we are at 20, so we would be about six inches above.
Well, just to be complete here, it's likely going to happen well before that. And also, if it's a 500 flood, year flood event or something, then it will happen before that, right? So I think the, the maps used are for 100 year event in 2017. But we could have a 500 year event in 2050 or earlier.
I mean, we're getting into probability and possibility, so anything is possible.
Right, and while we are preparing for that, and we know the conditions are definitely going to get worse. So what, what would have been helpful to me is to see that rendering with respect to the path, and also to see what, and I know some, you said some sections of the path, but I have, I don't have a good sense of, is it like 50% of the path or 2%, you know, I just don't.
I'm gonna say, am I able to share my screen or no?
No. No, but Liz, you send those materials to me, I'll be able to share them with the commission after the hearing between now and, and next time.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond?
Thank you, I, you know, I, I'm, I'm just a little confused, and I don't want to take a lot of time. But when is it expected that you're going to be raising this path?
The path will be raised under its initial construction.
So, so it, it, right now, I, I, just remind me where it is and where you're going to raise it to.
Okay, so the existing grade relative to the path is roughly at elevation 16. We're going to raise it up to elevation roughly 18 to 20. Just, it's not completely flat, so we do have some highs and low points in it.
And that's part of this initial plan that you've presented to us?
Yep.
Okay, well then that, you've answered my question, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think, I, I've just been so impressed tonight with your ability to answer all of these questions, thank you very much.
Like how you guys keep me on my toes.
You got more than you bargained for. And I did, Commissioner Herbst, before you go, I did look up the appeal period issue. And Liz, it is right that it's for property owners and residents. But the appeal goes to the community CEO, in this case, the mayor, with technical analysis, and in response to those appeals, FEMA could change the map. We know that's highly unlikely in this case. But that appeal period could actually result in a change in the map. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that. Commissioner Herbst?
Thanks, yeah, it's actually in the, in your filing with us, the documents from FEMA's. It's, it's 90 days after the June 22nd, the second newspaper posting, there's a 90 day appeal period. Anyway, I had a different question or concerns really about the amount of fill, particularly at the bend and, and its proximity to the intermittent stream. I am always concerned when you're doing that kind of work right up basically to the exact bank line there. And I, I, it's not, I mean, it's, it's a little chunk there at the, at that first bend. So I, I guess I, I, I'm just dubious that, I, I think it's, it's a, it's threatening to the intermittent stream to be filling right to the edge there. And I, now that we're talking about it, I see that that's some of the places where the path is at 20 feet as opposed to 19 or 18, so I don't know. I, I would want to see the path moved away a bit, so you're, you're, you're reducing your impact there, not filling so close, or I don't, maybe if it was lower, you'd, you'd, you wouldn't have to feel so close to it, but I am concerned about that. I, I did try and look through, and it looks like all your language says you'll do appropriate erosion control, but I sure want to know what that means in this location, because I, I am concerned about that.
Certainly, so under the, so before we ever move to construction for a project like this, because we were disturbing more than an acre, we're obviously going to file for a construction general permit and get, and create a SWIP, a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, to to monitor, mitigate, and reduce our construction impacts. And because we are proximate to the wetlands within that 50 foot natural buffer, we are on the hook to do let me call them, like a sediment removal calculation analysis, we have to do an equip, sorry, to do an equivalent buffer calculation. So we have to ensure that the erosion and sediment controls we're installing in this case, which will likely be like a double hay bale. So we have to ensure that the erosion and sediment controls we're installing in this case, which will likely be like a double hay bale um will perform as good as a natural, the existing natural fifty-foot buffer that's there. Does that make sense?
It does make sense to me. I'll tell you that I've seen many, many projects and what's put on a plan when it's this close to a resource area is typically not what happens. Um. It just, it just isn't. I thi- I think it's too close, so I'm, I'm hoping you'll look at how you could, could move the impacts away a bit.
So we'll also, um, we actually just had a survey crew out there today. And we'll be going back tomorrow. We are rehanging all of our flags as well to make sure that the bank is clearly delineated before we even install any erosion control. So that they have a location for that, and we would commit to um locating in the field where the erosion control barriers have to go needed.
Okay, I, I mean, we certainly would want that, but I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I think your impacts are too close. I think filling right up to the bank is problematic. That, that's just my view. I don't have other questions.
Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Eleanor, anybody from the public?
I'm not seeing any raised hands, and we haven't gotten anything in our inbox.
Okay. Okay, so Liz, again, I think you've received compliments for your um for your composure under fire here. Um, this certainly raised a lot more questions than I thought it was going to when I reviewed the file. Uh, and they're important questions. Um, and you know, you have a, you have a complicated site there, very significant site, very significant resource areas um that we're concerned about. So um, I think we gave you uh some homework here. I'm sure you're taking careful notes. Um, the thing about the uh resource area delineation with the uh Lomar, we, we definitely have to give that more thought. Um, again, and I apologize for sounding a false alarm there. We've just never had that um request of us before uh in an N O I. So that's what threw us for a loop. Um. But we're going to have to think about that a little bit more because uh again, um, it's highly, highly unlikely, but um, that plan could change. Um, that being said, uh, when you go through our regulations, when we're looking at resource area delineations, um, and I think it even says specifically for the floodplain, um, we can rely on, um, you know, uh competent evidence. Uh, and I would think this is. Um, but let's give it a little bit more thought. And I think Commissioner Herbst had asked to um look at the current the current uh conditions in, in the current floodplain, if I remember correctly. Is that correct, Commissioner Herbst?
Well, yeah, although I, I, I think the points you make are good in terms of we're allowed to look at best available information and that
Yep.
We're probably, that is probably what we have.
Okay, perfect. So maybe you can scratch that out.
Around the impacts to the actual.
Yep, thank you. So maybe you can scratch that off your list, but I think there's for our next, for our next hearing. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, uh, with that, I'd entertain a motion to uh continue the hearing.
Second.
Because second, okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay. It carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from um G M Two Associates, Inc., on behalf of the United States Postal Service Facilities for the proposed restoration and improvements of the U S P S facility vehicular parking lot located A Street in South Boston. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Brett Nealon of G M Two Associates, here to discuss the project.
Okay. Floor is all yours.
Thank you. Uh, gonna keep it pretty short. Um, short and sweet, I'll say. Uh, so G M Two Associates, Inc., offices in Pawtucket, uh, two hundred Main Street, Pawtucket, Rhode Island. Uh, the A Street parking lot is approximately five point five acres of existing paved parking lot used by the U S P S. Uh, it is situated directly over the Mass Turnpike, has an A U L, and is a land subject to coastal storm flowage. There are no other wetland features in the general vicinity. Uh, the parking lot requires improvements to continue operations and restore the area to original conditions. The two key aspects include um the first significant repair uh of linear sinkholes by injection methods. Uh, this is an eco-friendly structural polymer, uh, and is proposed to stabilize the underlying soils, minimize open excavations, and the encroachment to the underlying mass pike, and reduce the construction management of impacted soils. The second being replace asphalt pavement structures throughout the property. Um, a couple of the notes, the existing drainage structures and conveyance will be maintained. Uh, the project will not increase in previous area, and the project will not encroach upon any wetlands. Um, overall, the A Street parking lot will be restored to similar and original conditions. Um, like I said, trying to keep it short and sweet, so I'll open it up to any questions or comments.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, okay, first thing, could you um talk about, I know that uh a lot of this is repaving. Can you talk a little bit about um that process uh that you're fixing the sinkholes with? How invasive that is?
Uh, it's really not. It's almost like a borehole. You know, they're gonna go down. I forget the diameter. Um, they do it at certain intervals, and they inject this polymer. Uh, it expands upon injection and uh it stabilizes the subsurface.
Okay, how, but what is the impact, though? How, how much, how much of that do you have to do that you anticipate? And if it's in the filing, I apologize for missing it.
No, that's okay. Uh, there is a detail sheet at the end of the plan set. See if I can find it quick.
Yeah, give me like a square footage or something like that.
I will, so the number I know right off the bat is we're doing this about one thousand linear feet across the property. There's several substantial sinkholes.
Okay.
Dimension, I don't see that right off the bat for the actual size.
Okay. Um, and in the course of doing this, going to be any stormwater improvements? Any catch basins you need to clean out or?
Yes, we're calling up for cleaning and flushing, catch basins, and all piping.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna uh turn it over to Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, do you, do you know if you have deep sump catch bases? I know this came up before, and I forget what the answer was. Uh, with hoods, you, you know if you do?
I'm not aware if there's any hoods. Uh, these catch basins, the inverts are very deep. Um, looking at the plans, where the inverts vary from two feet below grade to eight to ten, and where eight to ten is right about two feet above means of uh sea level.
Right. I'm wondering if there's a sump to catch the debris.
I'm not aware, Commissioner.
All right, and uh, and all those catch basins need some type of hood protection to keep uh of the oil and any floatable jab. So you, you, you're gonna need to do that. My, my concern is these potholes. I mean, that thing's been there for a while, and if you have lost a lot of soil, generally the soil gets to go into a pipe or something. That's why it disappears. And I'm just wondering what the condition of these pipes are. Do you think any of these potholes are caused from migration of the soils into the pipe?
Um, our thought is that it's actually associated with the settling of the turnpike. Um, it could, and I, I'm not gonna rule that out. There's always a possibility of some kind of seepage in the catch basins and the piping. Um, but based on the positions of these sinkholes, um, and the alignment to the underlying pike, um, that's, that's our belief.
Do you have an as-built drawing of the drainage system over there that you could submit to the commission?
There is, um, the drainage is shown on C one point oh three.
Yes, and it is, do you know if that's an as-built? I mean, we all have drawings.
Yeah, those are the survey conditions.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, um, well, I would just want to make sure that we, we get hoods on all these, these basins throughout the, the whole area. Um, you have the A U L, um. You, you know what the extent of that is? Do you have it like just in a pocket, or is it the whole?
I, I believe it's the whole site, and that was part of the turnpike construction. Um, so inherently, the U S P S um got a restricted parcel. Um, but I, I don't know, Commissioner. Um, we do have a consultant for that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's the entire site.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we've been through this before on the site, and, and uh I, I recall that's what it was. Well, that's it. I would just want to see the things brought up, have them cleaned, and have uh hoods put on them.
Okay. Can you do that, Brett?
Absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner Long?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Conan?
Nothing for me either. Thank you.
Commissioner Richmond?
As usual, I'm very grateful to Commissioner Sullivan. Nothing for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
Similar, uh, and I, I know this is an R D A, so I'd want to see Commissioner Sullivan's uh requirements added as a
Yep.
Condition.
Yep, okay. Uh, Eleanor, anything, uh, anybody from the public? Raise their hands.
Uh, no, I'm not seeing any raised hands, or excuse me, uh, Sarah just raised their hand. Um, if you'd like to unmute yourself.
Yes, good evening, Commissioners. I know it's a, a, a long evening, um, but I do have a couple of questions about the site and understanding the process a little bit more. Um, earlier in the evening, we heard about Thid Kennedy, and I'm just curious. Um, is any material going to be excavated um on the site? And if so, what happens to that material? Is it going back in? Is it being removed from the site? How is it being held on the site and during any temporary time? Um, just to, so the commission is aware of it, this site is surrounded um or has a butters of nine residential buildings, um, six hundred and sixty-eight residential units. And so we just have some questions about how um this is all kind of playing out and um what we can anticipate. And also, I understand that this is part of the parking lot and the part of the parking lot with the maintenance facility and the actual U S postal trucks, just wanting to make sure there's not going to be any impacts, because we have obviously, as um Commissioner Sullivan is aware, we have had um water table and um flooding um slight flooding impacts in this area before. So those are kind of the parts of my um questions and wanting to understand um this a little bit better. Thank you.
You mind if I respond, Commissioner?
Yeah, no, please do.
Um, so the process is gonna be, they're gonna first do the injection uh to stabilize the subsurface. That's gonna be as minimum uh excavation as possible. Um, we're actually proposing it to avoid any soils um during construction management and, and processes. After that's completed and the site stabilized, um, what we're gonna do is we're gonna regrade the property and repave it. There may be some um negligible soils that need to be, be removed. Uh, those soils will be stockpiled on site. If not, they would be live loaded. Um, it will maintain very similar conditions to the current grading.
Okay.
Thank you. And if I can just interject really quickly, um, just care and take um around Wormwood Park that is right in the corner of um the area where you're going to be working. Um, just anything that you can do to care for and make sure that the trees and all of the park remains in as good condition as possible. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, how do you want to handle that? That's outside of our limits right now.
Uh, which limits? The limits of this project?
Yes.
Limits to your property. Yeah, that's, um, I would suggest that you um uh get in touch with the community directly, but that is not within what we're um hearing this evening. So can you have someone reach out to Sarah?
Um, I can. It's, uh, I don't know if Sarah wants to provide information to Eleanor, and I can talk to her.
Okay.
And explain.
That'll work. Okay, um. Anyone else, Eleanor?
I don't see anyone else.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue um a negative uh determination of applicability uh with the special condition um that Commissioner Sullivan Commissioner Sullivan talked about, and I think that's um putting um cleaning all the sumps and putting heads on them. Did I get that right?
Hoods.
Hoods, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, Commissioner Herbst, you didn't have anything, did you?
No.
No, okay. Okay, so the motion's out there.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Conan? Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries six, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from Time Bond on behalf of the Boston Gas Company for the proposed replacement of an existing gas main located at ninety-seven to one forty-five Farragut Road in South Boston. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening. My name is Julia Navatney from Time Bond, here on behalf of Boston Gas Company. Um, so the first project, uh, there's a couple RDAs tonight that I'll be presenting. Um, the first one here is uh ninety-seven to one forty-five Farragut Road. Um.
Oh, I think you froze. Is it my internet or is it Julia?
No, Julia, can you, can you hear us? No, Julia's frozen for me.
Yeah, I was a little thrown off because Commissioner Conan and Commissioner Herbst were um very still as well. They're doing great imitations of statutes there, so um.
I think Julia's trying to rejoin now, so let's see.
Okay.
Hi, I'm back. Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, so uh, I don't know where I got cut off, but um
Pretty much the beginning.
Okay, Boston Gas Company is proposing the replacement of existing gas mains in uh Farragut Road and um the South Boston neighborhood of um of Boston. Um, so the work consists of uh approximately one thousand two hundred seventy-five linear um, and it will be replaced with a plastic main. Approximately four hundred forty-four of this linear feet of gas main um is within jurisdiction and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um, so in this area, the gas main consists of four-inch, six-inch, and eight-inch diameter cast iron. Uh, and that will be replaced with eight-inch diameter plastic main. Um, so work within land subject to coastal storm flowage uh totals approximately eight hundred eighty-eight square feet of impacts that are temporary to this area. Um, all of the work will be conducted within um the existing roadway right of way and landsup particular coastal storm flowage is the only resource area that this work is within. Um, the gas main will be installed within approximately two-foot-wide trenches, um, supported three feet below surface grades. Um, the trenches will be backfilled daily, and all the materials will be live loaded into a dump truck and return and um brought to um processing facilities off-site for disposal if necessary. Um. No net fill is proposed in land surface coastal storm flowage, and as I mentioned, the impacts will be temporary because their area will be returned to pre-existing grades and conditions once the gas mains are installed. Um, National Grid will use their um standard best management practices, mainly silt sack inserts and catch basins and adjacent um and adjacent catch basins near the work. And these will be catching good working order and inspected after precipitation events. Um, and these controls will be kept in place until all of the areas are stabilized. And that's all that I have initially.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and I did a little research, Commissioner, Commissioner Conan, I know that your recurring question is, why are you doing this? Uh, and I actually talked to someone who uh uh works on these projects and uh works for Boston Gas, and um his response was that uh the state D P U um requires uh the utility to replace gas mains. I think they have to replace, it's either a hundred and forty million dollars worth per year. It might even be like four hundred million, I can't remember. But it's a significant amount, and so uh, and the issue is um the um gas line explosion in Dover uh several years ago now. Uh, so uh several years ago now, uh so it's a requirement that they replace um lines that are, I don't know, uh aging. So anyway, uh with that Eleanor, do you have anything on that?
Have anything on this, no.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, Commissioner Long?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Commissioner Condon?
Thank you Chair Parker for looking into my question, why are you doing this? And and the second part of this is, why is this capacity increasing?
Um yeah, so that seems to be also a recurring question, um. From what I've gathered, um after discussing this with with Boston Gas Company, it seems that especially in South Boston, there has been an increase in the demand, um I guess because there's been a lot of growth in this area residentially. Um and so, replacing the gas mains um for safety reasons, as was mentioned, it would make sense to increase the diameter to allow for the increased capacity, because these mains are they are, a lot of them are over a hundred years old, and so the the um demand is a lot different now than from when they were installed in the early nineteen hundreds.
So they've been replaced for safety reasons, and it's required by DPU. And while that's happening, the size is being increased because the the demand has increased.
Yes, from my understanding.
Okay, I have another question, but they may not be in the scope of this call, thank you.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Sorry, Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Okay, uh so with that, uh Eleanor, anybody raise their hand?
I don't see any raised hands, and I'll also plug for this project again, um we don't have conditions drafted. So if if there are any that need to be included, we should discuss those.
Yeah, I didn't hear any, uh so I uh make um entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with the uh standard erosion controls.
I move.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing, okay, thank you, uh. I don't think Julia's going away, next item on the is a request for a determination of applicability from Time Bond on behalf of the Boston Gas Company for the proposed replacement of an existing gas main located at thirty-three Farnsworth Street in South Boston, floor is all yours again.
Okay, thanks. So this project is in the south waterfront, or South Boston waterfront neighborhood, um this project consists of a replacement and an inst- a new installation and extension from the replacement, um so approximately a hundred eighty-five linear feet of replacement is proposed of a six inch diameter plastic main with a new eight inch diameter plastic main. And extended off of that replacement is a proposed four hundred ninety linear feet of new gas main to extend from that from Farnsworth Street into adjacent alleyways, and then essentially tie into a new distribution line that will be uh servicing thirty-three Farnsworth Street. Um, similar to the last project, this is all within lands subject to coastal storm flowage. Um and it's not within in any other resource area, and the work will be entirely within the roadway and these just uh existing alleyways. Um the trenches will be backfilled daily, again, same uh version controls, and um the impacts will be approximately one thousand three hundred fifty square feet of of temporary impacts to lands subject to coastal storm flowage. Um. And the area will be returned to pre-existing grades and conditions after the work is complete.
Great, thank you, um okay, uh Commissioner Sullivan, anything?
Uh no, I just, on on all of these, I would just again bring up the point to the gas company, uh please stop putting your pipes on top of ours. That's just the general. Uh but nothing on this.
Seems like a really good idea. Commissioner Long?
I got nothing, I have no pipes in that neighborhood.
Commissioner Condon?
Uh this one includes a new section?
Yes, this includes an ex- uh an extension installation of new main.
Because there isn't a new development?
Yes, so this is to support um a new service line that was that's being installed at thirty-three Farnsworth Street.
For the record, I asked the question, does National Grid, or why doesn't National Grid look at alternate solutions that would be less subject to climate change and its consequences, and less contributing to exacerbating climate change?
Um I don't have the answer to that question, I'm not sure what their exact um kind of analysis looks like, but I know that a lot of these replacement and installations are, like I mentioned before, based on demand. Um like this is for, this new installation is for a sale, like a new customer that's being serviced serviced, so that's the reason why the installation is is proposed, and then I assume the replacement section is to support that increased demand from the adjacent newly installed gas main.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, um Commissioner, um Richmond?
Yeah, I I have a question, when is this work going to be done?
Um I'm not entirely sure of a schedule, I think this one, um since it's a um a a new customer, I think it's assumed as the applicable um authorizations are received. And this is a relatively small length of gas main, so it should probably only take around a month to install.
Okay, because I mean, obviously, um it it would seem like it makes more sense to try to do it at a time when, you know, um flooding might be, might be less um than to wait until the, for example, hurricane season when flooding might be more. So I I hope it's sooner rather than later.
Yes, and and I do think that they, the contractor, the crews, don't typically work in, like weather that is, you know, high precipitation events. Um I'm sure that the weather will will dictate so some of the schedule as well.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Thank you, um okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to uh issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion controls?
Do we have a hand raised? Sorry.
Oh. I think it was one that wasn't lowered, but uh Sarah, do you have a question?
Uh yes, I just wanted to plug for the applicant that this i- is within an historic district. And and that thirty-three Farnsworth is a life sciences building. So I just wanted um those, that information to be made available, just to understand that um there might be additional considerations by the Four Point Landmark Commission, I'm not sure though.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so we have a motion on the table, uh do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I vote aye, that carries six nothing, okay, one more Julia, request for, next is a request for a determination of applicability from Time Bond Inc. On behalf be- behalf of the Boston Gas Company for the proposed replacement of an existing gas main located at I ninety-six Lake Shore Road in Brighton.
Okay, so um this project is located in Brighton, as you mentioned. This um proposed replacement is approximately um well, the whole project is approximately two thousand six hundred ninety-five linear feet of gas main replacement in Lake Shore Road and Lake Road, or Lake Street rather, and um also proposed is the installation of a new gas main in Washington Street and Tropello Street. The only area subject to jurisdiction is the replacement gas main on Lake Shore Road which is within the one hundred foot buffer zone to Inland Bank Chandler Pond. Um, this work consists of approximately one thousand one hundred seventeen linear feet of um replacement gas main of existing six inch diameter cast iron with a new eight inch diameter plastic gas main. Um so the work will occur on Lake Shore Road, which is just adjacent to Chandler Pond. Um, the work is not within any other resource area, and it's not within uh the waterfront area. To clarify, it's it's within the one hundred foot buffer zone, but not waterfront area. Um, again, this gas main will be installed in approximately two foot wide trenches and that will result in approximately two thousand two hundred thirty-six square feet of temporary impacts to the one hundred foot buffer zone. Um, these te- these impacts are temporary, and the area will be restored to previously existing conditions and grades. All of the work is within the roadway, and none of it will be in any vegetated area adjacent to the pond. Um, and the trenches will be backfilled daily and um standard erosion controls including silt sack inserts and straw waddles or bales will be used on the perimeter of work adjacent to um or between the work and Chandler Pond. And these again will be catching good working order and inspected after precipitation events.
Thank you, um Commissioner Sullivan, you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to point out, if the work on Lake Street hasn't started, where you show the Faneuil Valley Brook. We have a Brook crossing there, you already stuck one gas main through the center of it, so we're going to have you take that out of there. But your new one will have to go underneath the new crossing, so if you just look at your plans, I know it's not part of the subject, but I just happened to notice that. Uh you wanted to put another twelve through it, so.
Um so can you clarify which area, which area you're talking about?
Um yeah, give me a second, it.
Because work that's not within jurisdiction, um.
Oh, yeah, this is just, I'm just warning you guys, I'm trying to be a nice guy tonight. Uh just telling you that you you have violated our space already, but it's at probably number one fifty-two Lake Street. So you can just bring it back to the uh fellows at the gas company and tell them, we're putting in a new conduit to drain Chandler Pond and for climate adaptation to keep everyone from flooding. Your gas pipe goes through the middle of it, we need everything moved, so you wanted to put a new one in, I just didn't want you to have to move it twice, that's all.
Great, so that was a heads up Julia.
Okay, thank you.
Carry that message back, um sounds important, um Commissioner Long?
Uh no- nothing for me, just that, there's going to be yeah, project over at Chandler Pond from the Parks Department, I'm sure that'll be settled in some other forum, but don't want the construction vehicles to come into each other, that's it.
Okay, thank you, uh Commissioner Condon?
Is this one just a replacement? There's no increase in the diameter?
Um so this one, the work within jurisdiction is replacement of a six inch diameter cast iron with an eight inch diameter.
Oh, there is, okay, I just didn't catch that in my eye, all right, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond?
Um I'm I'm just curious as to whether or not all of these things uh should affect the determination of applicability?
Uh well, Commissioner Sullivan was outside of our jurisdiction, uh and also Commissioner Long's. Uh those agencies will have to sort out those issues on their own.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing for me.
Okay, thank you, uh anything from the public Eleanor?
Not seeing any hands raised, and we also haven't seen anything in the inbox.
Yeah, thank you, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion controls?
Don't move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
I vote aye, that carries six nothing, thank you Julia.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for a determination of applicability from TRC Environmental Corporation on behalf of Ben Star Electric Company for the proposed replacement of an existing security fence surrounding the K Street substation uh number three eight five with a more secure fence and the existing footprint located at five hundred East First Street in South Boston, who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, my name's Peter Defusco, I'm a senior environmental specialist with Eversource. Uh we have a few other uh project team members here today, I just kindly ask that they introduce themselves for the record before speaking, if if they need to do so. As mentioned, the project at five hundred East First Street uh consists of the replacement of an existing security fence. A portion of the fences within lands subject to coastal storm flowage, as well as buffer zones to coastal resource areas. Uh just wanted to take some time to brief the project before our consultant TRC goes over a couple of slides. And reason being was that uh this project recently uh received a negative determination in November of two thousand eighteen. And if I was sitting on your side of the commission, I would ask, well, why didn't you do the work when you had the open permit? Um so just to touch upon that a little bit would be mainly it's public involvement, right, so we work a lot with public involvement, whether it's the plantings, the artwork. Uh one of the things that affected this was the fence height. So the original project that was approved uh had heights upward of twenty-six feet. And we have our project team that works a lot with the community and revised this to be a consistent height um lowering it to approximately fifteen feet all the way around. That change subsequently had to go before the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, and that took a tremendous amount of time to uh plan, prepare, and then of course, to get the decision back. Um additionally, a question of why is why the replacement, um and that is also um due to federal guidelines. At this time, if I could pass along to TRC, we have just a few slides to run through.
Yep. Good evening, everyone, um my name is Molly Lennon, I'm with TRC, here representing Eversource tonight. Um you can go to the next slide.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure that we received your slides.
Um, I got a confirmation.
Oh, wait, Molly, yes, I'm so sorry, I didn't see those, it's gonna be just a minute.
Okay, no problem. Um, I guess we don't need the the first couple right away. Um so the project site itself is a large existing substation in South Boston. Um the ground cover there is all grass, uh gravel and asphalt throughout the site. Um and then the new Harbor Walk extension borders the western and northern perimeter of the site. And then East First Street and K Street are on the eastern um south and east sites respect, uh edges respectively. Um so we have a few jurisdictional areas on the project site and near the project site. Um we have coastal flood, uh the coastal flood resilience zone and waterfront area both of which are jurisdictional under the Bosse Wetlands ordinance. Uh so the coastal flood resilience zone is in the western portion of the site, and then waterfront area extends onto the project area, and that's mainly in the southwestern section of the site. Um we also have FEMA flood zone AE with a base flood elevation of twelve feet and land subject to coastal storm flowage. Um additionally, we have the hundred foot buffer zone of several off-site coastal wetland resources um that extends onto the project site. Um, and these are jurisdictional under the Bosse Wetlands ordinance, as well as the Wetlands Protection Act. Uh so the floodplain and land subject to coastal storm flowage is mostly in the northwest section of the project site. Um and then we have Rocky Intertidal Shore located offsite to the north and the buffer zone from that extends just into the northern portion of the project site. Um there's also Coastal Beach, which includes tidal flats. Um and that is located to the west of the project site with uh buffer zone extending into the project site. And then lastly, there is Coastal Bank located to the west and north of the site um with buffer zone extending onto the site. Um so, in total, the fence being replaced, there's going to be um about thirty-six hundred linear feet of fence replaced. Um, and this is actually a reduction of a thousand linear feet uh from our original plan that was approved by the commission back in twenty eighteen. Um and this is because we are no longer replacing a section of fence that lines either side of the access road that uh cuts through the middle of the substation, instead, we're just gonna stay to the perimeter of the site and just add a gate on either side, um. Um, so out of the thirty-six hundred linear feet, a little under half of the total linear feet of fence being replaced lies within jurisdictional areas. Um, so the work itself will involve digging a temporary trench on the fence line uh that will be no more than fourteen feet wide and five feet deep. Um, however, this will be narrower in some areas like along the western side of the site just to so that we don't start to encroach too close to any jurisdictional areas. Um, and then after the trenches dug, the foundations will be poured into the trench and then the trench will be backfilled to existing grade and covered with crushed stone. Okay. Um, yeah, I guess if you could go two slides over. Yeah, so this has all be um like buffer zones and flood zones shown on the map. So we're we're mostly looking at the the western portion and the northern portion there, which are jurisdictional. Um, so yes, so then the new fence will be installed um with a storm barrier that will be on the bottom portion of the fence. Um, and then also some bushes and trees will be removed from within uh at least a fifteen feet of foot um zone of the fence in order to allow for adequate security monitoring of the area adjacent to the fence, um since we'll be installing video cameras and need to have an unobstructed view. And then finally, the site will be fully stabilized and restored. Uh, so before any work occurs at the site, we'll install erosion controls in accordance with EverSource's best management practices manual. Uh, so this will involve installing erosion cor- controls such as straw waddle or silt sack um around the areas of work to contain any sediment from washing off the site. Um, as long as installing um stuff like uh filter bags and storm drains. Um, also store any uh stockpiles and equipment outside of the jurisdictional areas. Uh, if you go to the next slide, please. So yes, so the vegeta- uh vegetation clearing that is required for adequate security monitoring includes removing eleven trees in the southwest corner of the site um that lie within the coastal flood resilience zone and four of those also lie within the hundred foot buffer zone to coastal bank. Uh, so all of these trees being removed were planted previously by EverSource for uh past projects. Um, and new trees will be planted in place uh just outside of that monitoring zone. Uh, so the new fence will consist of hardened panels supported by pillars placed on top of the concrete foundation set in our installed subgrade. And the, I I guess you can go back one slide, please. Um, and then the storm barrier at the base of the fence will be about one foot thick and extend approximately one to seven feet above ground level to create a uniform flood protection elevation around the substation. And this storm barrier is necessary to um protect the integrity of the equipment inside of the substation during major storm events like hurricanes that could hit the area. And this will just help ensure uh continued reliable electricity service to customers in the Boston area. Um, as for impacts resulting from this project, they are fully broken down in tables one and two of the narrative. Um, but there'll be temporary impacts within jurisdictional areas due to the trench that will be dug and then there'll be permanent impacts due to the insulation of the fence, even though it is it's within the existing fence uh footprint. Um, then in accordance with EverSource's standard practices, we'll have a environmental monitor conduct uh inspections at least weekly, um if not more at the site to make sure things like erosion controls are in good working condition. Um, no problems there. Um, make sure equipments being stored properly. Um, and the environmental monitor will work closely with the crew and the project team to just make sure that any issues are resolved as soon as possible. Um, so in conclusion, the majority of the work I discussed uh can fall under the exemption for uh replacing like the existing fence within the original footprint, since this is a public utility. Um, and we filed the RDA because we're looking to see if the uh bushes and trees uh being cleared can fall under maintenance. Um, but a- again, we will be planting new vegetation, including new bushes and trees on the property just outside of the the monitoring zone. Um, so with that, uh we appreciate your time. Uh Pete, do you?
Yeah, thank you. Um, great job, Molly, and uh just kind of forecast and some of the questions that have come up uh this evening already. We did identify some trees that were able to keep some fully grown trees. So it's not like we're just wiping everything out. And then the what's being replaced, uh we've worked closely with the neighbors and the public interest groups to make sure we're utilizing species that they want to see and that the public will enjoy, especially as they enter the Boston Harbor Walk.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. And I think that you definitely anticipated one question um regarding the trees. Um, I think we're going to need to see a landscaping plan. Um, and I don't think there's one in the file. Um, that being said, I also uh not sure this qualifies for an exemption. So I'm going to let others go ahead while I uh quickly research that. Um, Eleanor, did you have anything?
I don't have anything on this, no.
Okay, let's go to Commissioner Sullivan.
Yeah, I'm just curious on the flood barrier. Um, I understand you worried about the overland flow and sea level rise. Did you investigate how your drainage system works and whether or not anything could bypass any barrier by coming under the underground, backwoods up the pipes, then out of your catch faces?
It's a good question, Commissioner Sullivan. I don't know that answer off the top of my head, but I can happily provide that information for you when I talk to my project team.
Yeah, it's just something you should look at. I mean, we don't accept the flood right away, but you know, simple check valves somewhere on the systems, whether it's your system that might go to the harbor or into our system, which although we have some protection, we we're not ready yet to protect everybody. That's it. It's my only comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Long?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So um, the landscaping plan would be helpful. Um, I think we, I'm not sure about the specific RDA process and what we can do, but um would love to make sure that their native species being planted may be taking care of that already. Um, but that that would be excellent to see appropriate native species in that area, but that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Condon?
I have nothing. Thanks, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm not prepared to um vote uh on this um and that that they are exempt. Um, I I certainly think that at a minimum, we need to get um a landscape plan. Um, you know, it's great that they can save some trees. Um, but I don't think that we've been given enough detail about what, how many trees are going to be um cut and what's going to replace them. Uh, so for sure, I think that's necessary. Um, I'm also uh concerned about this um fence coming back in. Um, and i- i- the the statement that um it's at a particular height, um because um you know, to protect the equipment, I'm sure that's right. Um, and I'm sure that's a perfectly um adequate reason as far as the applicant's concerned, but we haven't heard anything about um what the floodplain is there and how high this um, or maybe I missed it, but how high this whatever the the base of the flo- of the fence is going to be that supposedly is going to pro- quote unquote, protect the equipment. So um I, for one, um am not prepared to vote in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Herbst? Oh, no, go ahead.
Um, can I respond to a couple of these?
Sure, go right ahead.
Sure. So the the plantings, I believe there's only a small square footage of the plantings that are all under the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. Um, not to be rude or disrespectful, but I just want to make sure that what we're reviewing is, I don't want to make it seem like we're clear cutting a large swath, but I think what we're looking for is, and and Molly, if you could check the numbers for me real quick. Um, that said, we do have landscaping plans. Are we able to rev- look at them this evening?
Yeah, well, you you don't have the capacity to share what you have. If it's not in our file, we can't uh. Is it in the file?
No, I don't believe so.
I didn't, yeah.
And in regards to the fence height, that's um already been approved by the Massachusetts DPU. Uh, and I'm I'm sorry, there may have been another question that if if you could please ask again, I might be able to answer uh this evening.
Well, the D- the DPU um did may or may not have the same standards as the Conservation Commission.
Okay, um Commissioner Herbst?
Sorry, I don't think I have anything to add here. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and I did look up the exemption and I think that um you do fall under the exemption because the um WPA says specifically maintaining, repairing, or replacing but not substantially changing or enlarging electric, gas, water, and to telecommunication facilities uh which would uh include the plant and plant infrastructure with your security fence, I think would be part of that. Um, I was stuck on, for some reason, I thought the exemption only applied to the uh the lines, the infrastructure itself, not the facilities. So um I think that uh you're correct in your your analysis. Um, okay, so um I think we're looking for a landscaping plan that you have, but you can't share. Um, so I think we're going to have to have you come back and show us that. And Peter, to your to your point, um I thought I saw that there's going to be tree removal within the buffer zone, right?
Yes, Molly, were you able to see what the square footage or or how many trees in that buffer zone were proposing to remove?
Yeah, so I say I I briefly mentioned, um there'll be eleven trees removed from the um coastal flood resilience zone and then um four of those eleven trees will be removed from the hundred foot buffer of um coastal bank.
Yeah, that that's that's a lot. We generally, when we've had this situation before, uh we have, you know, trees like this cut down and, you know, eleven is a very significant number. Um, we have asked applicants to come back and discuss that with us, so I'm afraid we're going to have to do that here. Um, any, I, so I think um anything from the public? Eleanor?
Sorry, I'm not seeing any raised hands and nothing in the inbox either.
Okay, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. Commiss- uh, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, so uh next time, let's talk about the trees uh in landscaping. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a request for an extension to the original order of conditions for DEP file number zero zero six one six five five from Fort Port. Okay, it's getting late. From Fort Point Associates on behalf of Commonwealth Pier Trust Two for the proposed revitalization of the World Trade Center, including demolition of a portion of the building and expanding the Harbor Walk located at two hundred Seaport Boulevard, South Boston, the uh resource areas are designated port area, land under ocean, coastal bank, tidal flats, land subject to coastal storm flowage. Anybody here on behalf of the applicant?
Hi there, um, I'm Eric Fraser. I'm an environment planner with Workpoint Associates and I'm here to present the proponent. Um, I just have a quick short blurb. Um, so the order of conditions is set to expire on um August tenth and the proponent is requesting a three-year extension to this order. Um, the project involves the revitalization of Commonwealth Pier, which includes the new public space, enhanced retail and public amenities, um modernizations of the existing Seaport World Trade Center building and implementing several adaptation and resiliency measures. Uh, the proponent has completed the majority of its in-water work at the project site, including the marine pile installation in the final phase of float locations, um but the project structural repairs to the headhouse, ticket booth installation and hardscaping and landscaping is ongoing. Um, and the installation of the aprons railings is still to come. Um, the extension is being requested. Um, after the order of conditions was received in twenty nineteen, additional time was needed to obtain the remaining permits for the project. And then the permitting schedule was further delayed by the start of the pandemic. Um, and additionally, the the project has had a particularly complex construction phasing schedule as it's a pretty unique site and um has continued its marine operations throughout construction. So in short, just the the project's permitting and construction schedule requires more time than the initial free year term.
Yep. Understood. Uh, not unusual for a project of this magnitude. Okay, um Eleanor, do you have anything?
I have anything on this.
Okay, uh Commissioner Sullivan?
No questions.
Uh, Commissioner Long?
No questions, thank you.
Commissioner Condon?
No questions.
Commissioner Richmond?
No questions.
Commissioner Herbst?
No questions.
Okay, uh Eleanor, anybody raise their hand?
I see no hands raised, nothing in the inbox.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I would entertain a motion to extend the order of conditions for a period of three years.
Don't move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you. Okay, um before we get a regular meeting, just want to note there's been a number of continuances uh continued our ten for DEP file number zero zero six one eight two zero and Boston file number twenty twenty-one dash zero four five. Uh, DEP file number zero zero six one seven zero four and Boston file number twenty twenty dash zero zero seven. DEP file number zero zero six one seven seven two, Boston file number twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero. Uh, DEP file number zero zero six one nine two zero and Boston file number twenty twenty-three dash zero three five. Uh, and also continues a request for determination determination of applicability regarding the properties located at two yeah, two s- two Starling Street, thirty-four and thirty-six, Belet Street, West Roxbury. The commission will now begin its regular meeting. First item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number zero zero six one five five eight for the Olmstead Green mixed income rental phase project, part of a multi-phase mixed use development um at Harvard and Morton Streets located in Mattapan. Um, Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Yeah, so um as you all probably remember, we've gone back and forth a few times with the applicant on this. Uh, we've asked for more information. They've provided us with supplemental information. Uh, I've updated our folder in the Google Drive with everything that they provided and um staff would recommend that the that the commission issue a certificate of compliance for this. We we think that the um the information that was provided was was adequate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
No comment.
Uh, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Just make a motion.
I know, no. I I know I dropped my left left.
Okay, so it's not January first. Okay, uh Commissioner Long?
Got nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Eleanor, when there's a lot of back and forth, do you also try to visit to ensure compliance?
Yeah, so um the the last time that a site visit was conducted for Olmstead Green was actually in March, which was um before before I had started with the city, but um so I'm I'm actually, yeah.
Yeah, just to shortcut it a little bit of history here, yeah, that the whole reason there was back and forth was the result of a site commi- uh site visit that uh Kate and Nick had made, and so the responses were a response to their site visit.
I see, okay.
Before Eleanor's time.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Hey, Commissioner Herbst?
Sorry, I did have a question. Could I? I thought, now I can't find it. I was trying to do too many things at once. I was trying to find the materials again, but it looked to me like they didn't do a couple of rain gardens that they were supposed to do. And so I guess I was I wasn't, I was anticipating we would be talking about that, but I, so I'm just wondering, was it just decided that that just things were sufficient anyway?
So, yeah, I think that, based on, so, yeah, it based on the memo and the conversations that I'd had with them, they instead had then installed a grass swale, which was meant to manage the stormwater.
Okay, yeah. Grabbing the materials again, there was a a spatial issue regarding the
I think they talked about it, the slopes were too steep.
Yeah, there you go. Yep, yep.
I just, I don't I don't know if Commissioner Sullivan had had a chance to look at that or or needs to. I mean, maybe it's fine. I just I was sort of anticipating that we had issues to address.
No, they they met our requirements for handling the stormwater. They just did it in a different way.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance.
So moved.
You have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing. Okay, next item is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061721 for grading changes and stormwater improvements located at Suffolk Downs, East Boston. Eleanor?
Great, yeah. So for this, staff were able to conduct a site visit earlier this week on July 17th. The site was clear of equipment. The work appeared to be complete, and so based on that and the materials that have been filed, we would recommend that the commission issue a certificate of compliance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan, any questions?
Nope.
Commissioner Long?
No.
Commissioner Condon?
No.
Commissioner Richmond?
Nope.
Commissioner Herbst?
Nope.
Okay, so with that, I could entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061721.
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
I'll say aye, and that was the first time I heard six no's in a row.
No, that's what made me chuckle. Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Okay, so I was thinking about that, not to prolong this meeting, but that was a good social science experiment you led off with nope, and everybody just followed.
Yeah, they usually do follow.
It was very interesting for me to hear that. Okay, back to business. Next item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061531 for the construction of a seven-story office building located at 105 West First Street in South Boston. I actually skipped over one, I'm sorry, I get. Let's go back, you've got it up there. What I meant to say was request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061568 for the construction of two office buildings located at 525 McClellan Highway in East Boston. Eleanor, would you like to relay this saga?
Yes, of course. So same site visit, so site visit was conducted on July 17th. This, they're requesting this to close out work that was not completed. There are, in fact, no office buildings there, and there is no sign of any construction happening, so staff would recommend that the commission issue a certificate of compliance for this project as well.
Great, great, thank you. And for background for commissioners who aren't on the commission, this was a this was an order issued for the potential construction of two office buildings that was a requirement of Amazon when they were looking for their Amazon headquarters. And so it was permitted before the rest of the project, so that in case Amazon waved a finger at Boston, the office building would have been already permitted. That was a requirement of bidding for their headquarters, which we all know what happened to. So Commissioner Sullivan, any questions?
No.
Commissioner Long?
No questions.
Commissioner Condon?
Does this mean those buildings are happening at some point?
That's correct. Well, yeah, not, yeah. I don't know what they're gonna come back with in the future, but those buildings are gone now.
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I guess I don't have any either.
Commissioner Herbst?
Nothing for me.
Okay, so then I entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for why, I'm flipping the pages and sheer eager to get out of here. Entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061568.
Well, why, why, but I I suppose I should have asked this question before, and I don't mean to be dumb, but why are we issuing a certificate of compliance if they didn't build the buildings?
Clear title.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's recorded in the date. Yeah, any financing would require a release. And I actually made a mistake here. It's a motion for issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number. No, that was right. I was right, I'm sorry. Oh my gosh, I'm getting giddy.
Thank you for the information, that was very helpful.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Oh, hi.
Okay, and I vote aye, that carries six nothings, okay. I will try to be better. Next item on the agenda, request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061531 for the construction of a seven-story office building located at 105 West First Street in South Boston. Eleanor, what do you have on this?
Yes, sorry, I'm reaching the point in the night where I'm smiling at absolutely nothing, so I'm very sorry about that. But yeah, so staff conducted a visit on May 11, 2023. All work appeared to be complete, and based on that, staff recommends that the commission issue a certificate of compliance for this as well.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan, any questions?
Nope.
Commissioner Long?
No.
Commissioner Condon?
Nothing. Is that the word?
Yeah. Use something non-conforming. Commissioner Richmond?
No.
Commissioner Herbst?
No.
Okay. So with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061531.
So moved.
Second, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing. Okay, next item on the agenda, request for a certificate of compliance for DEP file number 0061781 for Seawall Rehabilitation Project located at 85 East India Row in Boston. That one is going to be continued. Eleanor is waiting for more information, correct? Okay.
Correct, yeah.
Pick that up next time. Okay, next item on the agenda. And Commissioner Long, you'll have to recuse yourself for one, so I'll do them separately. Next item on the agenda is, oh no, I'm sorry, administrative updates.
I know, yeah.
I promised to get better, and I didn't, okay. I let everyone know.
No, there's a number of them, so I'm just gonna run through and then, if if that's all right, and and if if any members of the commission have questions on these, I'm I'm happy to elaborate. So as you saw in the Google Drive, we have a number of administrative approvals, and then we also have just a few general updates. So the first one is the Willet Street restoration update, so we were sent the spring 2023 monitoring reports for the two restoration areas that are on or near Willet Street and West Roxbury. These reports were in the Google Drive folder, so Boston Willet One is the work that in the northern portion of the site and on the Roxbury Latin School property. Boston Willet Two is for the more recent work that's being done along Willet Street in the eastern portion of the site. Both areas are doing well, and each letter indicates the work that remains and provides few limited recommendations for each area. And then the next, actually, no, that's not gonna make sense. I'm sorry, I just want to open this up to questions if anybody has any questions.
I have a quick comment on that one, and I had talked to Allison about it, I think, Eleanor, before you came here, but the southern one, I have a bit of a concern about trees or debris that are in the intermittent stream. So I just, I think I can talk to you all about it offline, but I don't want them to get into a third year with this issue never having been raised to them, although it's possible Allison has on it.
That sounds good, yeah. I'd be, yeah, it would be great to to chat about that, give it up to speed. Perfect. And then the next update is regarding 135 Bremen. So if you'll remember, at the June 7th hearing, a concern was brought up about activities that were happening on this property. I was able to get in touch with the person that Commissioner Sullivan suggested, and I learned that there had been concerns raised by Butters to the folks on this property. We confirmed that this is a Boston Water and Sewer Contractor, RJV. They're renting the lot to do some work at 135 Bremen Street in East Boston. After they received these complaints from a Butters related to equipment starting before 7:00 a.m. and improperly secured materials, they responded and adjusted their practices, and since that correspondence, there haven't been any further complaints that were brought to that, their attention. And the documentation of that email is is also in the drive folder.
When was that complaint and when was it addressed?
So, yeah, the complaint was February and let me see. So February 28th and yeah, so all of this would have, all of this was communicated at the end of February.
The only concern I have is, even during our June meeting, it appeared, it appeared to be the case that there were some live complaints from the community. But it's possible that it's not available to us as an official complaint, and therefore we can't take that into consideration. But it does, I am, I'm feeling a little undersolved about it.
Okay, well, to the extent that the complaint is about engines starting up before 7 o'clock, I mean, that's absolutely nothing to our jurisdiction. So I think that, you know, Eleanor got to the bottom of it, which she could.
Okay.
Thank you. Eleanor, what's next?
So next, we're starting on administrative approvals. The first one is for a project filed under DEP file number 0061802 to change access methods during construction. Both the request and the approval letter are in the Google Drive folder for your review. And then the following one is for temporary fencing around contaminated soils, which are located in Mowgli Park, which is within LSCSF. Again, the both the request and the approval letter are in the Google Drive folder. Also note that the reason that I'm also pointing to the approval letters is that they have specific conditions that we, you know, are expecting folks to follow, so it's helpful information to sort of see the the detail that we're requesting. And then the next one is an administrative approval for a project filed under DEP file number 0061789 to allow a minor change in the proposed jacking pit location on Springdale Street for the installation of a new underground electric transmission line. Again, those are in the folder for review. The second to last administrative approval is to allow temporary installation of straw waddles along M Street Beach. This is in relation to the Curly Community Center. The waddles are to be removed after the piping clover chicks that hatched on M Street have successfully fledged. And again, those are in the folder for your review. And then the last one is an administrative approval for a project filed under DEP file number 0061909 to revise the design of the proposed stormwater best management practice located within the 100-foot buffer zone.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Any update on staffing?
No updates there. We're working on it. It's a constant work in progress.
Okay, next item on the agenda is acceptance of the following orders and conditions. We're gonna take them piecemeal here. So the first one, Commissioner Long, you'll have to recuse yourself on this, is a notice of intent for DEP file number 0061944 and Boston file number 2023-033. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries five to zero. Commissioner Long, you're back on. Next item is acceptance of order of conditions for DEP file number 0061945 and Boston file number 2023-034. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing. Okay, acceptance of the meeting minutes from May 3rd, June 7th, and June 21st. Do I have a motion?
Sorry, Chair Parker, it'll just be, it'll just be the the 3rd and the 21st, not the 7th.
Okay. And do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from May 3rd and June 21st, 2023?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
I was there for one of the two.
Okay, why don't you recuse yourself from voting?
Recuse.
Yeah, it'll make it easier. Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries five to nothing. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, does anybody want to adjourn?
No.
No, let's just hang around and have a party.
It's almost time for breakfast.
Whatever you do, just bring me food. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Eleanor.
Good job, thanks.
Yeah, see everyone in a couple of weeks. Take care.
Bye.
Bye.